Good morning and welcome back to the budget hearings re-convening. I'd like to just go over the agenda so everybody has an idea of just how we're going to proceed. We have a quick update on a fund number from the courts that I'd like to go over first, then we'll go over the airport next. We'll follow that with the commissioners, commissioners highway, and then we'll do the auditor and council. So, pardon? Right, now the courts have a quick update and then we'll do the airport right after that. Alrighty, Emily?
Good morning.
Morning.
Emily Anderson Court Administrator, I forgot to mention during my budgets, uh, late last night. During our audits with, uh, the FRC grant people, they requested that we do alternating funds like we do for the juvenile court grant. And we'd already submitted our budgets for twenty-six and they had already public, like they were already at publishing at that point. So, we went to the commissioners on this past Monday or Tuesday and, and established that fund. So, we published the FRC grant fund at eighty-one ninety-two, which is what it's been for the past several years. Uh, Monday or Tuesday, commissioners are Monday, Tuesday at the commissioners meeting, um, we did establish fund eighty-one ninety-three to be the alternating fund. So, my question is, and I've sent this question to Whitney to ask DLGF, we've asked SBOA, they've not responded. Can we just switch the fund, although it's published as eighty-one ninety-two, can we switch it to eighty-one ninety-three so that January one, we're in the right fund? Or is this something you all have to vote on, switching that fund number, how do we accomplish the fund number change? Um, so I think we're trying to figure out that process with DLGF or whoever, or unless somebody else has an idea, but I really need to be the, the other fund, eighty-one ninety-three.
I believe I have a good idea. I don't, I'm not gonna say I know a hundred percent for sure. But as far as them voting on the number, I, they don't ever vote on a number, the auditors create the number, so the fact is they just voted on the fund. So, I don't really think the council needs to do anything, wouldn't be state board of accounts at all, it would be DLGF. The only thing state board of council looks at is that it is a grant fund number.
Yep.
So, it is. Um, as far as the eighty-one ninety-three versus the eighty-one ninety, or whatever.
Yeah.
Number, sorry, uh, I should just go on the next one. But as far as the number goes and the advertisement, I honestly don't think that that matters as much as the name of the fund. That's what I'll need to check on with the DLGF, but it's kinda like the DLGF cares about four tax funds plus highway and local road and street, other than that, we're on our own, you know what I mean, as long as we follow the guidelines of everything.
So, I've given a, the copy of the ordinance to Whitney along with, you know, what's happened and what we're asking, so if you guys could check with DLGF and let us, let the council know.
Yep. If Whitney had brought it up to me as far as like emailing DLGF and finding out.
Can I say something?
Uh-huh.
When we do the upload, that fund number doesn't get uploaded at all, it's just the title.
Yeah, so see, she's on the same boat, I think it's just the title, they don't really care as a lot, I mean, they just don't care about the numbers like that, like state board of council does. As long as we're in that grant number with state board of council, I think we're fine.
Okay.
But we should be able to get an answer on that, I would say by tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Alright, council, in front of you, you should have been handed the airport budget. Just wanna acknowledge that you reviewed it. I believe we have anybody here to ask questions to. But if you do have questions, please write them down, email them to, it's Tim, I believe. Okay, we'll move on to commissioners, page thirty-six.
Um, before we fully get into commissioners, I did have a brief conversation, uh, with Jenna about the Meridian Services line. It plays into our max levy and that will already need reduced, like you have the amount for it.
Alright, sorry, what page are we on? Page thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Line three twelve.
Uh, the max we can get approved for that on is seven hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and five. And that is a difference of seven thousand five hundred and twenty-eight.
Please say that again.
The difference or the total?
Both.
Both. The total is seven hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and five with a difference of seven thousand five hundred and twenty-eight.
Thank you.
And I will say that I did talk to Elizabeth about this, that next year, um, with them getting more in their groove of doing budget, they'll know to reach out to the commissioners ahead of time to give you that number as soon as we have it. We were a little delayed on getting it, so, but I did talk with Jenna the next day after we did it.
Jenna, commissioners, do you have something prepared you wanna start with, or you'll let council ask you questions?
Good morning, Stephen Brand with the county commissioners office, Jenna Kalen, executive assistant, and Commissioner Henry's also here. Uh, we've been following along and playing at home and we wanna be part of the team, so we're just saving a lot of questions. We're, we're willing to go back to the twenty-twenty-five levels. I would only ask that the raises that we put in for people be left in, uh, we saw this coming, we were proactive and we, uh, through attrition, we did not replace people, so in human resources department as an example, that was a three-person department and we've reduced one head, so we've reduced thirty-three percent of the head count in order to self-fund raises for the folks that are remaining in human resources. And you'll hear when we get to the highway department and engineering, we did a similar thing out there. Uh, we had a head in, uh, the engineering department and a head in the highway department. We combined those jobs into one, effectively reducing a head. And when we get to that, I would also ask that you leave those raises in because we self-funded through eliminating head count. And it's not just this payroll that you're saving, you're also saving the benefits, uh, associated with those two heads, which is, uh, on average about sixteen thousand dollars a year total cost for an average head.
That plays into the reduction that I was mentioning, I think, from last year.
I would, I would also add just for some color commentary that as we've replaced executive or exempt heads in the commissioners, under the commissioners purview, we've moved them to the forty hours and away from the, the thirty-two and a half hour rule. So, we did it with the building superintendent, uh, we did it with the, uh, county, uh, engineer position and we will do it with the human resources replacement as well, so, you know, I've had people come to me and say, oh, uh, I was on thirty-two and a half and now you want me to work forty? The answer is no, I don't want you to work forty, I just want you to work. You're an exempt or an executive employee and you should just work, you shouldn't line up at the door to leave after thirty-two and a half hours, you're a salary professional. If you wanna go to Donuts for Dad or kindergarten roundup or whatever it is, you go and you're a professional, you manage your time and you get your work done. Uh, on the exempt side or non-exempt side, uh, I would say that if a department has, say, five people that are on the thirty-two and a half hours and one person leaves, they ought to not replace that person and take the other four and bump them up to forty hours and pay them accordingly, per the Fair Labor Standard Act.
Of course, that would be up to the department heads, correct?
Pardon me?
That would be up to the department heads, correct?
Um, it would, uh, no, not in my opinion, uh, department heads that are appointed, I think that they was, if they're appointed by the commissioners, the commissioners would dictate that. If you're an elected official, then yes, it's up to the elected officials in those departments.
Building hours dictate some of that, or have previously dictated that in many cases.
You know, I've heard people say that. I've heard people say that, I'd make a counterargument that if, uh, an elected official, uh, just doesn't wanna make people work more than thirty-two and a half, uh, they would just split people's time, they would have, you know, people start early and leave early and people start a little bit later and leave later, so just simply opening the building, uh, longer hours only presents the opportunity for more efficiency and longer hours. But to Mr. Mokel's point, that elected official would have to, have to enforce it, you know?
Uh, the, the facts of the situation today are that we're, we got almost four million to go. And so, to me, everything should be on the table.
Yeah, I, I know, I opened the door and that's really not what we're here to talk about, the commissioners budget, but last count, there were about two hundred and sixty county employees on thirty-two and a half hours. The math's pretty simple, you know, if you can get those, you know, uh, twenty, eliminate twenty percent of those people, get the others to work forty hours, pay them accordingly and eliminate the benefits, you save a significant amount of money.
Just for clarification, you said you go back to twenty-five?
Levels.
On the part-time line, which year would you select on that, cause twenty-five's higher than twenty-six for part-time?
I'm not sure I understand your question, sorry.
Uh, line one ninety-eight, part-time? Twenty-twenty-five's a hundred and forty-eight thousand, twenty-twenty-six request is a hundred and forty-two, four ninety-four. I'm trying to get clarification, are you wanting to go back to twenty-twenty-five at that hundred and forty-eight thousand?
The lower the two.
Okay. Okay, just trying to clarify for.
Line one eleven, one oh one, where's the human resources director, that should now be human resources leader?
Correct. That's correct, yeah, uh, you know, the, the title director in this area, uh, we, that line item I think is a fifty-four thousand seven hundred a year and a director level in this area would demand in the low six figures, maybe up to a hundred and thirty-nine or a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. And we would not be able to attract any candidates with that job title, so we moved it to leader. And then, uh, we are gonna ask for an additional ten thousand dollars to be allocated to that, to that line for that, uh, that head replacement. So, that'll be a sixty-four thousand seven hundred dollar line next year, also, uh, if you do the math on the heads that we eliminated, self-funded plus giving some money back to the county chairman.
There was a question come up yesterday, Matt, I, I don't know if you addressed it or not, from the VA administrator, did he talk to you yesterday?
Yes.
Okay.
Their numbers are accurate.
Okay.
As they stand today.
Alright, thank you, I just wanna make sure he talked to somebody.
As approved from last year, they're, they're, they're right.
Alright, thank you.
Their numbers, meaning what they're currently getting paid is accurate.
Correct, yes.
Other questions for commissioners?
Oh, I'm just going through line by line. Thank you, I was just going through line by line and making sure I have everything, so like contractual services, all of that stuff is going back to twenty-five, everything.
Or you just said?
Everything, if, yeah, the, the liability, the liability insurance probably, I'm, I'm working on that right now, starting to quote out the liability insurance. I was consumed earlier this year with the, with the healthcare, with the switch from Apex to the Marsh McLennan Group. Starting to look at the liability, but I'm not sure it'll go down, and again, I'm asking for the salary or the, the raises to be left in.
Okay, so, can I? I think we should.
Yeah.
So, I think we should go through it a little bit deeper, if you're okay with that?
Sure.
Just to be clear, um, and overtime pay is at fifteen, it's the same as last year. Pre-employment cost reimbursement, um, is that screenings and stuff?
Yep.
Okay.
And that can reduce?
No, it's already, well, yeah, so it was fifteen hundred last year, it's two thousand this year, it's a cost going up probably.
Uh, actually, I do believe we're saving some costs because we switched, uh, to a different provider for some of the drug screens and the DOT physicals, so going back to the twenty-twenty-five level and that'll be fine, that fifteen hundred.
Okay. Uh, then we get into vision and dental insurance, um, FICA and PERF.
Just give it up for educational.
Oh, sorry, yes, sorry, educational incentive pay.
That's technically a military incentive.
That's the military incentive that was missed?
Three, yeah, just never, I don't know if they didn't know that they, I didn't know if they could get the military incentive, they brought it up to me around budget time.
Um, I thought that Ed talked to you after this, cause we talked to him after our meeting. Um, in the handbook, education and military are interchangeable and you can't have both.
So, we don't need an educational incentive, we just need the military.
It's just under the same name.
Yeah, when you guys had to add it in when we were down doing our meeting and that's how.
No, I said that we would change it, but it depends on how it was and the handbook has them interchangeable, so it was just under educational incentive, that's what we.
Right, so they have thirty-three hundred dollars in there now instead of zero?
Yeah.
Okay. But that's what that's for, correct? Okay. Vision dental, disability, FICA, PERF, health insurance. So, I'd like to talk a little bit about health insurance. Crunching the numbers, currently for this year's budget, the health insurance is based on twenty-twenty-five premiums for twenty-twenty-six. The assumption with the change that the commissioners made, moving to McGriff and trying to get those premiums negotiated down, uh, is that it would go down, but currently the budget is based on what it is today with the breakdown of the percentage between what the county pays and what the employee pays.
So, you're talking about the premium grid?
Correct.
So, what a, what employee pays out of their paycheck is about seven point six percent of the total premium?
That is correct.
And what is, and, and the county pays the rest.
County pays ninety-two point four percent.
So, that balance will change when we go, when we finally get a benefits grid with McGriff and additionally, uh, it'll be a two-tiered grid. So, uh, employees will be encouraged to go get their annual physical and go get, uh, basic healthcare screenings, if they don't, they'll pay a higher premium. And if they do, they'll pay the lower premium, so, uh, it will not only shift the balance from the seven point six percent but maybe up to twenty or, or maybe even up to thirty percent of the premium is what the employee will pay. And that will be mostly funded through the reduced costs that are coming from Marsh McLennan and McGriff versus Apex. So, what I mean by that is, let's say today, just for easy math, cause I'm not great at math, that the total premium's a thousand dollars, okay? And the employee pays seven point six percent of that, with, uh, a griff, let's make it up and say that the total premium goes to eight hundred dollars. That credit from a thousand dollars to eight hundred dollars will be given to the county and that will automatically shift that percentage that the employee pays versus what the county pays.
But their pocket would be the same.
Theoretically, I, I anticipate that it will go up, what the employee pays, must be clear, what the employee pays will likely go up. But it, but they won't have to make up the entire amount, moving from seven point six percent to say thirty percent. A lot of that will be funded with a lower overall premium from, from McGriff versus Apex.
That's all in the future.
Yes, so currently, uh, McGriff is negotiating with I three sixty, remember, we agreed to stay with all of our current providers. Uh, one thing that they're trying to do is get a cap on services, so as an example, if you have a twenty thousand dollar procedure, administratively, you have to do X amount of paperwork in the background, I three sixty does, versus a two hundred thousand dollar claim. Roughly, I three sixty has to do about the same amount of work, but today, they're getting a fee on the two hundred thousand versus the twenty thousand. One thing that we've asked McGriff to do is to negotiate a cap on claims. So, I'll make it up and say that all claims are capped at fifty thousand, so the max you would ever have to, ever have to pay would be a fee on the fifty thousand dollars. You wouldn't have to pay a fee on the hundred, on that extra hundred and fifty up to a two hundred thousand dollar claim anymore. So, they're working on that, they're also working with the reinsurance currently at Swiss RE to negotiate better terms there as well, as well as with Delta Dental and, and all the others, so they're busy at work. Um, you know, just the timing of budget versus when our, uh, when our benefits expires is not ideal right now, but they're working on it.
They're working on it, alright, so that's scenario one theoretically, that we wait and assume that we'll see some savings for twenty-twenty-six.
That's right.
Alternatively, well, last year's twenty-twenty-five budgeted amount for health insurance alone, not vision and, well, I guess that included vision and dental actually, so that numbers are probably about even. Cause last year it was six million two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. This year, just for health insurance, doesn't include vision and dental, but if you add that in, it's actually probably a little bit more. Um, is five point nine million dollars roughly. So, the county's on the hook for five million nine hundred and some thousand dollars for health insurance, if you add in vision and dental, that's another, um, I think it was five hundred K or something, so we're at like six-two, six-three, maybe a little bit higher. So, if we made a change to the county portion on all, if, if we took back twelve percent and made it a true eighty-twenty plan where eighty percent of the cost is to the county, twenty percent to the employee, that would get us about seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars this year, maybe a little more actually.
Assuming there's no change in the overall premium.
Assuming that rates never change, nothing, nothing changes, correct? So, on a family plan for an employee, they currently pay a hundred and seventy-eight dollars a month. It would be probably another two hundred and ninety-three dollars for the year on a family plan for an employee. A little bit more for employee spouse and child, just over three hundred, and then for just an employee only, it's a hundred and sixty-eight dollars, those are yearly numbers, I believe. So, it would be a cost to the employee, it would be a huge savings to the budget.
Yeah, that scenario, we're basically just shifting the cost.
We would just be shifting costs as it stands today, correct?
That's right.
Which, I mean, for all intents purposes, I believe you, however, we don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
We're making a decision based on the number today.
My gut says all the efforts around, around health insurance and change, so, uh, the clinic change, okay? Uh, switching from Apex to McGriff, um, changing the balance of, of premium grids, I think you're gonna see somewhere around eight hundred thousand to a million dollars worth of cost avoidance for twenty-twenty-six, but I can't, I don't have the empirical data to prove it yet.
And when we make a decision on trying to cut four million dollars today, do we base it on that?
Uh, that's, that's up to you, if I were sitting in your seat, I would, if that's what you're asking me. I'd also budget more for interest and do some other things too, but you didn't ask me.
Understanding the old clinic, the, the contract was for five hundred.
Even.
Five hundred thousand a year. And with the new clinic, the contract is for?
It'd be about a hundred and forty thousand, assuming the same participation rate.
Correct.
So, we intend to increase the participation rate at the clinic or eliminate it altogether, uh, which I'm not against.
So, there is, there is a savings there, but that's up to you guys, if you guys won't pay for the clinic, then we'll sign the contract, if you don't, we won't.
Say that one more time, Shannon, so what is, what is the difference?
It's, uh, around four hundred thousand.
So, the, so the IU BMH clinic today, the commissioners pay five hundred thousand dollars flat, that's a fee just to, just to have the clinic and the walk-in. Uh, additionally, uh, there are some medications that are dispensed that are, that are incremental and if they use the emergency service or other services, those are incremental payments, so we're roughly paying IU BMH, let's say around eight hundred thousand dollars a year right now. Five hundred thousand dollars flat contract plus three hundred thousand dollars in additional usage and fees and med, med dispensing and things like that. The Marathon agreement, if you assume the same participation rate, because they have a lower per member per month rate would be comparing the five hundred thousand to about a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
One thirty-nine fifty, approximate for the first year.
That's assuming that it's the same, correct? Apples to apples, basically the same.
Participation rate, so the participation rate right now by county employees is pathetic, it's about nine or ten percent. And we need to get that up into the fifty-five to sixty-five percent range. So, assuming the same participation rate, you're talking about five hundred thousand versus a hundred and forty thousand. So, what I was saying earlier about the eight hundred thousand to a million includes what Commissioner Henry was just saying. So, you stack up the switch from Apex to McGriff, the clinic change that Commissioner Henry just articulated and the, the grid adjustments that councilman Kansas is talking about, you're gonna see that eight hundred thousand to a million next year.
Isn't part of the current, uh, program, A, the non-open weekends?
IU BMH?
Yes.
Uh, I do believe they have some.
The clinic.
The clin, the clinic, I do believe they have weekend hours for emergencies right now.
But do you have to call them?
No. It's a walk-in clinic today.
It used to be like you're talking about, but they've moved the office and now it's shared with, yes, urgent care. It used to be like you said, you had to go to urgent care someplace else.
Every since, every since the move, uh, we, we heard a lot of good things about the old clinic, always.
Yeah.
And, and honestly, every since the move, there's been problems.
You have to have a reservation, right?
I'm sorry?
Not really a walk-in.
Y-yes, it, it turned into an emergency, uh, urgent care clinic.
Combo.
Combo with, uh, city and county employees sharing one side of it. But when it, when it switched to urgent care, the complaints started coming in, it, it went downhill fairly quick. And quite frankly, um, it's gotten a little better, but not a lot. We do have employees that frequent the clinic and, and like it and we have employees that'll go out there and then we get a text message or a phone call that they had to wait an hour or two or sometimes.
Or longer.
Sometimes longer.
And it has that reputation now, so people don't go. So, it's a duel.
And so, what's the, so if we don't do that, then what is the option?
We're looking at, uh, an alternative clinic called Marathon, here, it's in Lindenburg Plaza. We've been talking with them now for about a month, we made a visit on August twenty-first and we have set up a meeting for next week to continue the negotiations specifically on the per member per month. They gave us a flat rate and we would like to see it broke down, uh, I'll make it up, a thirty-eight dollar per member per month for an employee, a thirty-six dollar per member per month for a spouse and a thirty dollar per member per month for a dependent or a child as opposed to having, I think today at, at IU, it's about forty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
What if you do away with all of it?
Pardon me?
Do away with all, but then what?
Then.
You, you save money and, uh, employees don't have a clinic to go to.
They would go to their family doctor.
They'd go to a family doctor or go to the ER.
Or go to the walk-in, uh, dock in a box, wherever they're at.
Or yeah, or dock in a box, yeah.
And so, does the, uh, county pick up any of that charge?
Yes. It, it would run through our insurance company then, currently.
Why aren't we doing that?
So, so, this, this was the goal originally, if you guys, uh, some of you may remember. When we originally joined the clinic, the thought was is to, uh, get people to go to the clinic versus go to the ER would reduce our, our cost, county cost. So, less, less participate, less join the clinic, let the employees go to the clinic and see if we can't, um, reduce some of the costs. The problem, the problem has been the employees haven't taken advantage of the clinic, honestly. So, we never really saw, we never really saw a reduction, some employees did benefit, but we, we really did.
Employees aren't using it, I don't see what the urgent care need is, if they're going elsewhere anyway, if ninety percent of the people are going elsewhere.
And, and when, when we've spoke with Marathon, we've talked about this a lot and if we do end up, if, if you guys choose to fund it and we sign the contract, um, we are gonna do a better job of marketing, we have talked to Marathon about that and, um, so we, i- i- this also includes a telehealth uh, feature where if you're, if you're just home and have a fever and sick, you can call a phone number and, and get, um, talk to a, a nurse practitioner, a doctor and, and get something prescribed and not even go to the doctor, so that's part of it also.
So, they're seven days a week?
They're not on the weekends now.
When you say they, are you meaning Marathon?
Yes.
They are not currently, that's one of the things that we're meeting with them next week to negotiate, our extended hours. So, I'll make it up, today, I don't know this number, but let's say they have eight hundred total members. The city just switched from IU clinic, our same clinic, to Marathon, to this clinic, and they're gonna add eight hundred members. If we also switch, we're gonna add eight hundred and twenty-one members, so they're gonna triple their usage, so we wanna meet with them and make sure that they're willing to add another NP as well as somebody to take labs and do those things and extend their hours.
And that's assuming we get up from the four percent country, uh, the four percent usage rate today to.
Participation.
Correct, and, and let's say that you guys decide to fund it, we sign the contract and we go with Marathon. Correct. And, and let's say that you guys decide to fund it, we sign the contract and we go with Marathon and in six months, the usage isn't up. I'm, I'm with you. I say we, we end the clinic if people aren't gonna use it and it's not, it's not cost beneficial, then we go.
Right now, just let me go over the hours real quick since it's kind of a topic. Mondays, seven to four, Tuesdays, nine to five, Wednesdays, ten to three. Thursdays, nine to four, Fridays, seven to twelve.
Is that in contractual services that, or is that the institutional care? Uh, lines three twelve and three thirteen, like where's the, where's the cost for the clinic now?
Marissa pays for it now, so I'm not sure.
Mar- say what?
So it would come out of what, forty-seven oh one, the non-reverting fund?
Is Muncie School still with IU Health?
Sorry, Mr. Hughes.
Is Muncie School still with IU Health?
Uh, I don't.
As far as I know.
As far as we know, they are, um, but, but the city, as well as the firefighters and police, they switched, they're switching to Marathon.
Do we have a current contract with IU Health? And when does that expire?
We do. I notified them via email yesterday that we voted it down. The commissioners voted it down on Tuesday. In our, in our commissioner meeting, that we would be going a different direction. And we have the official notice letter from our attorneys that Jen is gonna put on our county letterhead. And that'll be sent over to them this week and that I believe was a hundred and, I can't remember the number of days that, but there's a, there's an out clause in there that. Sixty days, ninety days, something like that. I just can't remember.
At that point, they will no longer provide services.
After that date, right? Or they may elect to stop immediately. I don't know.
We've already jumped ship, but.
Yeah, we're jumping ship one way or another.
We're jumping, yeah. We're jumping one way or the other. Well, I, you, you said if we choose to fund something, but it's, it's already a done deal.
No.
We could choose not to.
We've not signed a contract.
We've not signed a contract with Marathon with the new clinic. We've just told the old clinic in, in X number of days, we're not gonna work with you anymore.
So the choice is Marathon or no clinic?
Correct. Yeah, there, there, there might be another possibility of a clinic. Um, been trying to work with Ascension on a couple of things. They do have some doctors here in Delaware County. The question is whether they're willing to have a conversation about a clinic, but right now it's Marathon.
And, and back to the purpose, we're trying to give people access to a primary care doc, basically. A urgent care slash primary care physician that saves us money from going to the ER, saves us money from hospitalization, hopefully. Provides some level of proactive health, you know, opportunity, right? Things like that.
That's exactly right. My experience conducting total compensation surveys in this county for thirty-five years is. The average is about forty-five to forty-six percent of employees actually have a primary care physician. The county is about twenty-six percent. The county's lower than the, than the county average.
Emily loves the clinic. So if you guys remember, so Jane Lasseter, Jane Lasseter loved the clinic.
Can I just give a little history on this? When we switched insurance and we used to have the premium insurance, which was eighty twenty, we all loved the eighty twenty and then we had to go to high deductible. And the employees lost their minds because everybody went to high deductible. This was a, a reach for us to help the employees with that high deductible cost because it was a huge change, remember? Everybody lost their minds. So this clinic was to help provide us with that gap of meds. Cause we all get, a lot of people get their meds from there, um, just a physical every year or just going in for a cold or whatever it may be. Because all of those costs were coming out of our pocket now because they have a five thousand dollar deductible, four thousand now, but it was five. So they got this clinic for us in order to help bridge that gap, that five thousand dollar gap. Now, I will say, I use the clinic all the time and I agree, this clinic has gone downhill. You can't get in, it's hard to get a hold of anybody, but I'm still utilizing it. Because I don't want to pay a hundred and twenty dollars every time I go to the doctor for a cold. And it's costing the county less because it's only, what, forty dollars? Versus my hundred and twenty and eventually I'm gonna hit that deductible and then county's on the hook for that. So you have to go back historically why we started the clinic and it's to help bridge that five thousand dollar gap for people. It's, it was employees' cost savings.
You'd put Emily in charge of marketing for that.
Now, I will tell you, there's several people in my department that use it. I don't, I don't know who's not using it, but I can't say every person's not in my department. But I don't know who's not using it because I talked to a ton of people that utilize it, and especially ones with kids.
If I may, I ditto that. If I may, I ditto what you say.
Yeah, we all, we all, we all utilize it. I would hate, I would really hate to see our, our side to increase and have no clinic. That is going to really lower morale of the employees tremendously.
Yeah, and, and I mean, you're incentivizing employees to use a clinic if we shift more of the premium cost back to the employee.
I think it results in people not going to the doctor because they don't wanna pay the bill.
They don't wanna pay the bill.
I know, that's how I am.
Now, there's, there's, there's an alternative to that. We don't want that, okay? Because the longer you go, the more expensive you become later on.
That's kinda what we're saying.
Yeah, so.
Well, remember yesterday, my dad's story. Don't be like my dad.
Right.
But my employer, and maybe it's the same with, with you, Matt, um. I have to, when I do my, um, signing up every year for my insurance plans. I actually have to enter the date and my doctor's contact information for the last time I had a physical because I get a fifty dollar per month deduction. If I have proof that I'm actually going to get my physical, right? Which, I mean, if we're doing something like that where you have to have proof that you're using the clinic because you're going to the doctor, then now we're utilizing the service.
And, and I guess we should say the principle is if we keep going to the doctor, they'll find something sooner, so it's not near as expensive to fix. And, and even though we're mad at the clinic, we still like Dr. Hope.
Everybody loves Dr. Hope.
Everybody likes Dr. Hope. Nobody that doesn't like Dr. Hope.
I, I don't like him. I, I don't like him. I think he's too nice. And, and, and that costs the county money. Be, be clear about that.
But, but.
We're not on that topic yet.
Yeah.
Whenever you're ready.
Matt, did you get, is this three eleven we're talking about?
Uh.
Is that where the payment is?
Well, that's what I, I wanted to get back to that. I, I, no, what? Forty-seven oh one. You're saying that the health benefit fund, forty-seven oh one, which is where health insurance comes out of, also pays for the clinic? Yes?
Yeah, yes.
I mean, there's only like three hundred grand in that account right now.
She pays most of her bills out of there and then does a department reimburse from their lines.
Say that one more time.
She does a departmental reimbursement of their line, so it should still cut, like, budgeted for.
It just goes into the forty-seven oh one account to pay. It's a clearing.
When they sign a contract with the clinic and it costs us eight hundred thousand dollars, where does that eight hundred thousand dollars come in for the cost of the clinic? Like, is, or is that a, a premium we're paying throughout the year?
It, it is, it should be budgeted for in their line and then Marissa would put it in her non-reverting fund.
Okay, so in the commissioner's budget.
And this is a confusion that we've been dealing with for a little bit. Everyone doesn't seem to understand the non-reverting fund.
No, I understand the non-reverting fund. So I'm trying to find out where in the legislature line item it comes from.
Matt, that three hundred thousand you see doesn't seem like enough. But there's other lines that they remove money out of and put in that account.
Yeah, and on the non-reverting.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah.
But in terms of the commissioner's budget, so if you look at three eleven, three twelve, three thirteen, we know Meridian has a line. Institutional care, is that for, to jail?
That's, that's jail.
Okay, so in contractual services, there's eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand. That includes a horde of things, I would assume, um, but that does not include the clinic. I don't believe so. Okay. You have to ask Marissa. Again, I'm still not clear.
Are you trying to? I, I'm a little confused on what you're asking, really. I think you're asking, you want the initial, like, are we paying eight hundred grand down on this clinic? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, where's that?
Or are we paying that throughout the year through a premium?
Correct.
My understanding is we normally do that as a premium. Is that correct, commissioners?
So the clinic, there's a flat five hundred thousand dollars contract with the clinic and that provides employees with free, of, of, a host of free services. Which they generally don't use. They go to somewhere else and, and pay. So we're paying the clinic and we're paying through our insurance because the employees don't go to the clinic.
I'm trying to figure out where that five hundred K is.
I don't know that answer. That's, that's an auditor's.
Is what's in question.
Yes.
And I'm with you. I'm thinking this shit. I, I'm serious because. The premium, of course, is paid through everybody's budget that pays into this.
Yeah, when there's a claim or they show up to the clinic or whatever.
And then that's where it gets pulled from in order to cover, you know, the monthly, monthly care of this fund.
So this, this change could reduce premiums.
Theoretically.
Could it be coming out of them? Five hundred down is how I guess I would have.
Could it be coming out of their health insurance line? Cause I know from last year, what was it, six million?
Right.
So could it be coming out of that line?
That's my answer. That's my question.
I think maybe, but I can't tell you for one hundred percent.
Because their health insurance line.
That health insurance number was calculated from all of the departments.
I know.
And I, me and Tanya sat down and handed that if there was an additional cost, it was not told to us, so it was not budgeted for. Which is a problem we keep running into. I feel like all we budget for is health premium. We're not. Considering the other costs.
I think this year people did try to account for claims on top of the premium.
Well, they didn't because it's automatically calculated through OpenGov, just the premium.
Okay.
I don't have an answer. Five hundred K.
I do know specifically that Marissa only pulls from the insurance lines from the departments.
Yes.
Right. You pull from the premiums and if you pay a bill to the clinic today, it comes out of that forty-seven oh one?
Mm-hmm.
Regardless of what the bill's for?
Mm-hmm.
Probably being pulled out of there. Which is, seems like an accounting error. Okay. Point being, where's the savings gonna come back to? So if we're only paying a hundred and forty grand to Marathon, so we save three sixty, where's that three sixty? Is it just gonna float around in another, another land or whatever? I, I don't know. Because we need to calculate that number into potential cut. Am I wrong?
So, Marissa just confirmed that Liz was correct. It, it does. So any money that she pulls in comes directly from the health insurance line.
So to Shannon's point, even though it's a health benefit fund, which will be paid premiums, health insurance costs to insurers. Apex, whoever else, like, that's what that's for, but we're also paying that five hundred K to the clinic.
This is also why we keep running out of money in the nonprofit.
That's why we keep running out of money.
And, well, and, and claims aren't figured in either. It's the same way with our liability insurance.
Yeah, I know, and that was.
We have liability, you have a liability bottom line.
Right.
But we don't figure in claims.
Right.
And claims can be hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yeah, I mean, this year, right, there was significant overages and we had certain people with huge numbers.
Absolutely. That's, that's the problem. The claims don't get figured in.
Yeah, so it is in this new budget though. That's one thing we do need to talk about, that we put in risk, in the risk, uh, line, the liability line. We increase that and that needs to stay increased.
That's part of that liability, that million dollar increase in liability? Okay, that's great. That covers the, theoretically, that covers the, the claim component that departments are not budgeting for currently. They're only budgeting for the premiums.
On the liability side. On the liability side.
Not medical side.
Oh, oh, not medical, sorry.
Right. Remember, remember that at the last commissioner or the, uh, council finance meeting, I was asking for like six hundred and forty-four thousand. I think we got four hundred and fifty thousand. That's what Commissioner Henry's talking about.
Yeah, okay.
So we only budgeted the premium for liability, but we didn't even budget the whole premium. The premium's like one point three million. And the budget last year was nine hundred and twenty-one thousand.
We're doing the same thing in health insurance apparently.
Yeah.
You absolutely were. So what was, what was done in the past was.
And we're compensation.
I'll just tell you what was done in the past. Took the, took what was budgeted the previous year and added ten percent to it. That's what was done. Nobody looked at what the actuals were and then budgeted from there.
Correct. And the health insurance is the same way, right?
Yep.
Your historic.
It's a little better, but you're right. Yeah.
So the six million is a premium only number. The six. Yeah, the six million for twenty twenty-six. The health insurance line item is premium only, doesn't include claims. Doesn't include any significant, anything beyond that. So it doesn't include the five hundred K for, or a hundred and forty, whatever it ends up being for the clinic. We don't have a budgeted line item for that.
We're self, we're self-insured, right?
Yes, right.
So claims are paid out of the premium?
Some of them.
Uh, Marissa's on her way up. If you guys could just let her into the podium and maybe she can help answer some questions for us. I think that, I think the bottom line is the, I'm gonna call it money down. I don't think it, it's anywhere, uh, except maybe here in contractual.
Alexa said it is paying, being paid, paid out of.
Well, she's gonna try to explain how the billing works and what it's for.
Okay.
Um, and you guys can tell me whether that's part of.
The, the, the answer that we need first is when a premium comes out of an employee's check, excuse me. And the county matches it, where's that money go? That, that'll answer Mr. Hughes's question about being self-insured. And then where that money goes, is that the same fund that we pull out of to pay the claims? Because we are self-insured. That's the answer Mr. Hughes is looking for.
I agree.
Everything does go through the forty-seven oh one fund. Has its own bank accounting to it, so that we can keep all that.
So while we're, while we're waiting on Marissa, to the six million dollars, you are gonna see a reduction in the premiums for a couple of reasons. Number one is we did, we conducted the depend audit, right? And there were fifty-nine people that couldn't justify, uh, their existence on our plan, or they refused to justify. We had some of that as well. And, uh, those, and those people on the plan will come off, so, uh, they're gonna, there will be less claims that way. You can't quantify that because you don't know how often those people did or would go to the doctor in the future. Additionally, there was a spousal carve-out audit, which took off about another ten or eleven. And then there is a retiree spouse component that's coming when we make the switch. And I think there are six or seven retiree spouses that'll come off of our benefits as well. So that's gonna save you money. And the switch of, of the, uh, of the premium grid will save you money. In addition to whatever McGriff is able to negotiate with our current providers, our reinsurance, I three sixty, uh, Delta Dental and others. So, yeah, no, I'm not letting Marissa in here. So, you know, I, I could guess at that number, maybe a half a million dollars reduction. But until McGriff comes back and says, here's the data, I, I'm not gonna say this is the number, but I estimate it's gonna be a half a million dollars. Give us the answer from Marissa. When, when, uh. When premiums come out of an employee's paycheck and the county matches that premium, where does that money go?
Forty-seven oh one.
Forty-seven oh one. And then when there's a claim that comes currently from Apex or IU Health Clinic, where does that money come from to pay those claims?
Forty-seven oh one. But the IU Health is not budgeted because that strictly comes out of my forty-seven oh one. And that's not.
On top of.
Correct.
Premiums away. And if there's an overage, since we're self-insured, it's coming out of that, above what we paid for premiums. That's coming out of forty-seven oh one. That also doesn't have a budgeted line item.
Correct.
Itself, right? Okay, so do we know what the overage was this year or last year?
Like what was left in the account?
No, I could see that, but the, um. Like if our total premiums were the six million two eighty-nine, if that was the number. Above that number, we paid another million in claims that was beyond our premiums. Do we know any of those figures at all? Is that part of the McGriff analysis?
It can be.
I mean, uh, again, point being, if we were gonna budget for overage, what would that number need to be?
Yeah, we'd have to get that number from Apex and from IU Clinic and then aggregate those numbers. Is that what you're looking for?
Uh, it's, I guess, I'm.
That's why I do the premium calculation, is to make sure there isn't an overage.
Mm-hmm. But are we, is that true?
I mean, our, the forty-seven oh one, forty-seven oh one balance fluctuates.
Correct.
In some months we do well, in some months we, we.
Depending on the claims. Yep.
But we've, ever since I've been aware, we've always had enough of a balance in there. That there's no, nothing other than what's budgeted for, uh.
In years past, we've had to ask the commissioners, or like last year, we had to ask for, I think, two hundred thousand to appropriate, cause we were gonna be short.
Yeah, twenty twenty four, the net revenue was six point four three four million, net expenses here today at the end of December was six million forty four. That probably, I'm sure there was outstanding claims going into twenty twenty five from that, so you, you, we, we were over.
Yeah.
And you always have latency, right, you have, you have things that are, that are done in November, December, that don't get built until the next year, but, you know, you can't budget for that, there's no way, you just have to look at the historical.
We do have stop loss coverage.
We do, anything over, I think it's a hundred thousand dollars goes into stop loss.
But if you take out the five hundred K for the clinic, that's coming out of that fund that was not budgeted, that's your overage.
Sure. So, so I'm clear, cause I'm learning here as well, that the five hundred thousand dollar flat fee to the IU Clinic has not been budgeted in the past?
Correct.
In addition to the liability insurance premiums not being budgeted properly. So that's five hundred thousand plus four hundred thousand.
So you've, you've, you've.
That's nine hundred thousand that wasn't budgeted, but their actual expenses year over year.
So the commissioners have eliminated the IU for next year, so that five hundred K right now is zero.
That's right.
If we go with Marathon, it may be about a hundred and forty, right?
Yep.
So right now we're at a three sixty win rate on the forty seven oh one, but we need, we need a hundred and forty K.
Yeah, yeah, you'll be at one forty plus, uh, like if we leave the medicine in there, I think that's about a hundred and two thousand a year, if if Marathon continues to dispense medicine at the rate that IU is dispensing medicine, but remember, that's a very low participation rate.
Yeah.
And we wanna increase that participation rate, so if we're gonna pay, uh, per member per month fee for these free services for the county employees, they need to go use those free services, and not go somewhere else and get those services, so we're paying, effectively today, we're paying IU for free services that aren't being used, and when the employee doesn't go to IU, they go to their, another provider, Doc in the Box or whatever, and we're paying there too, we're paying double, cause people aren't using the clinic.
Okay, so yeah, so then you're back up to three fifty, maybe, four hundred, then we need to budget.
If they don't go, we don't need to budget, that's covered by the health insurance premiums, that gets paid into forty seven oh one, all this is in forty seven oh one. We don't need to budget for it.
The clinic's separate from healthcare, right, the clinic's separate from healthcare, so today, you had Apex benefits.
That five hundred thousand is paid out of forty seven oh one.
Right, but it wasn't budgeted.
The only money being collected is the health insurance premiums for insurance, there's no money being collected for the clinic, we have to pay for that. And the claims that go with it.
We paid out six million dollars.
We paid all of it out in twenty twenty four, we, we had to give them, they had to go find four hundred K in twenty twenty four out of forty seven oh one.
But the amount that was paid out of forty seven oh one was six million dollars.
Six million four hundred, or no, yeah, six million dollars roughly.
Okay, that included five hundred thousand for the clinic.
Correct.
Yes.
But wasn't.
So it wasn't anything we needed to budget for.
Correct, but they were short four hundred K.
I understand, but that, that, you don't ascribe that to the clinic, or anything else, that, that's a combination of claims and administrative costs and the clinic and.
I, I, I see your point, however, because, or is that, is that money collecting interest, or any?
I mean, yes, but it's not there for very long.
If the only revenue going into that.
Real quick, within a month, I mean, you're not always getting a whole lot of interest on it, because it's going in and out in the same month.
Right, so if you're only collecting premiums, and we're not collecting anything to pay for the clinic, how, how is there enough money in that account?
Money, money got moved from somewhere else.
That's how the premiums are calculated, is they take the claim history, they take administrative costs, they take the cost of the clinic, they put it all together and say, this is going to be your premium for the coming year to cover that.
Actually, actually, sorry, actually, the clinic cost is not in the premiums, so the only thing that's in the premiums currently was, was from Apex benefits. That is what the premium is for, to pay the healthcare, and that will be the same thing, the new grid that we're talking about, the two tiered grid with McGriff, that will also only pay the premiums for healthcare.
And that's what the ladies hear.
The costs for the clinic are not in the premiums.
But they're not in our budget either.
Agreed.
I, I think, I, I think we have to remember is, the reason for the non reverting fund was, good years we have, the hopes was, is that account would bank money, we wanted it to bank over a million dollars, we wanted to have over a million dollars saved in that account, in event, we had a catastrophic year, so we wouldn't have to come back to council and ask for
Right.
more money, so I think probably what's happened is, with the clinic cost, th- th- those, those premiums have paid for things, including the clinic, but that really wasn't the intent, the intent was, is to have the clinic budgeted as well. That, that was really the intent, so we could, so we could save some money, and one year, if, if there was a, if there was a big increase, we wouldn't have to pass that on, all of it onto the employees, we would have a little, uh, savings account that we would, we could hold on.
And Shannon, uh, I know we started to talk about all that at one point, and I don't think we ever like got to a real solution with it, but that's like a whole nother topic for a whole nother day.
The non reverting fund.
When, I should say, not how the money goes into forty seven oh one, but when the money goes in.
Well, I think, I think one of the issues is, is some of these departments, uh, budget money for, for healthcare, and at the end of the year, that money goes back into the general fund, in my eyes, it should go back into the non reverting healthcare account. Because, again, that's what that account was supposed to be used for, was.
Yeah, I do remember that argument, because the, yeah, and then people will take leftovers, cause they had employees not filled.
Yes, correct.
And they'll take that money and transfer it, use it for other things.
Yes.
I have a question, currently you're saying that the usage rate of a clinic is ten percent, and you're saying Marathon's, uh, contract's a hundred and forty thousand, if you reach your goal of fifty percent, do you have a rough idea on the cost of the clinic?
Depends on what we can finally negotiate with them, so what they've offered right now is a flat forty dollars per member per month, and I wanna see a rate for an employee, a spouse, and a dependent in, in re- reduced per member per month rates, um, so it depends on what we can finally negotiate with them. But yeah, I, I, there will be reduction, but I can't predict it right now.
You say we have a possible ability of eight hundred and twenty one people?
We do have eight hundred and twenty one people, members.
Okay, I mean, give me a moment, I can calculate the math, I believe.
Sure.
Not really, I'd say a hundred and forty, I'd say a hundred and fifty eight thousand, so, maybe it would just slightly double that, so, it's not quite as bad as I thought it was gonna be.
What's that, Mark, uh, forty dollars?
Right now their offer is forty dollars per member per month.
Cool, two hundred thousand, hundred and ninety seven.
At a minimum, again, if, if this is the direction the commissioner's going, which I appreciate you guys' collaboration on this discussion, because it's important, I mean, it's a huge chunk of our budget, um, and, I mean, again, to me, if we're gonna go that direction with Marathon, and, you know, again, that's an assumption, or any clinic for that matter, and we need usage to help us, then the eighty twenty is a fair compromise to adjusting those rates, and when the new rates come, we could collectively discuss how the breakdown ends up.
I agree, and I'd be careful setting the, setting that eighty twenty in stone, because if McGriff is really successful, and I believe they're gonna be, the overall premium will be reduced, maybe a couple hundred dollars per employee, and that two hundred dollars, for example, should go to the credit of the county, and that will automatically shift the percentage between employee and the county, and there may not have to be any increase to the employees, but I would hesitate to say that as well, I, I predict a, an increase to the employees, but I, they won't have to pick up the entire gap going from seven point six percent.
Which if I pushed eighty twenty today.
It'd be a seven hundred thousand dollar shift.
It'd be a seven hundred thousand dollar shift, it would be a three hundred dollar hit, a majority of per year, per employee.
For, for families, yeah, and we have that information somewhere, how many are family, how many are single, that I don't have in front of me.
Yeah, I mean, given the fluctuation, it's, it's around, you know, average about three hundred per year, but again, so.
But it won't, I don't, I don't anticipate it to be that drastic.
I think we've, uh, I think we have, I mean, I don't know, we have, we're gonna have a lot of deliberations, deliberations, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we can move on.
If you, uh, go with McGriff, the savings could offset premiums this year, or not?
So you said if we go with McGriff, we are going with McGriff, that's a done deal, that's the healthcare side.
Yeah.
The, the clinic is the, is the one that we're maybe going.
Yeah, that's right, so, the savings this year could offset the premiums, so that they don't have to do it this year.
That's right, well, next year, next year, yeah.
So twenty seven, they'd have to re- readdress it, but it is what it is.
Yeah, I, I would hope they would go down again in twenty seven, if, if we manage our healthcare, if we manage our healthcare properly, and people utilize it, it should go down. But what we've been experiencing with, uh, Apex is a ten to seventeen percent increase year over year.
All right, so back to the book, do you wanna keep going?
Yes, I do.
The longevity one seventy six, it was zero, it's seventy seven hundred, is that?
That's cause it came out of council, it was distributed to.
That's true, I keep forgetting. Unemployment, longevity.
Before you put the page on that.
Uh-huh.
Because this budget was turned in before the HR director retired, will that longevity prorated pay change, and do you have that number?
This year, she would have gotten.
Point that microphone to her, Stephen.
She would have gotten two thousand two hundred dollars for longevity.
So you can reduce that line item by two thousand two hundred dollars?
Hold on a second, there's only seventeen hundred and thirty eight or thirty nine there.
No, there's seventy seven hundred.
Wait, are you talking longevity or longevity prorated?
Oh.
That's what I was particularly asked about, so which, which line are you talking about, Jenna? One seventy six or one eighty two?
Eighty two.
I'm talking about one seventy six.
Talking about one seventy six, so that one would go down twenty two hundred?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I do have the number for the prorated one, though, uh, uh, she was getting two hundred and fifty six for the prorated. What was the prorated, I'm sorry?
Two fifty six minus two fifty six.
Line one seventy six is fifty four hundred?
Yes.
And one eighty two becomes?
Fourteen eighty two, is that right?
Fourteen eighty two, correct.
Fourteen eighty two?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, office supplies, can those go back? Ten four, ten thousand four, you got your book ready? Just say yes or no, if you think you can go back to twenty five, yeah, okay.
Health supplies and operating supplies, both, I'm sorry, I was.
Yes, back to twenty twenty five levels. Fuel.
That's a tough one.
Yeah, I, I would put it back, uh, we have seen a lower usage of fuel in some vehicles.
Other supplies?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Professional services. Is that legal, what is that?
That is, that pays for veteran burials.
Veteran burials?
Yes.
That's, that's in there, yeah, I think the contractual services might be where you find the legal professional services. You can go back to the seventy four thousand, seven fifty.
The professional services is veteran, veteran burials.
The three.
They're in there, I believe there might be some additional things.
Okay.
Your contractual services?
Hang on a second, we're still, we're answering two questions ago. That's breakdown for three eleven?
That is, yeah.
Okay. So veteran burials is the only thing in three eleven?
No.
Oh, no, that's, or three hundred, sorry.
The breakdown of three eleven is up there.
Okay, so, read off what's in there.
Three ten, yes. Google, S I C buildings, Murphy elevator, Y S U, Catal- Catalyst Public Affairs, ProShred, Endpoint Creative, S Way Disposal, Bug Off Test Pros, Orson, A P S, Chem Search, and then you have a.
That's three eleven, correct?
Yes.
What, what's the current balance in three eleven?
Matt, do you have current balance for three eleven?
Professional Services, commissioners. I was five seventy three, seven hundred.
We spent a third of, that's, about, about a third of that, so that can, can that be reduced even below twenty twenty five?
I wouldn't. I would not.
It would not, gonna be reduced at eight thirty nine, nine oh two.
Well, you got elevator inspections coming up. Probably that haven't been done yet.
Yeah, I haven't been in the seat long enough to be able to know what comes in late in the year, so, I, from my perspective, I can't say that we could lower it, be below twenty twenty five.
How about the what?
On three eleven, on three eleven, we go over contractual services every year, um, and a lot of times, towards the end of the year, then we have to start pulling out of edit for contractual services, so, I, I'm, I'm a hundred percent sure we're gonna use all this money before the end of the year.
You're gonna spend two thirds of it in the last four months of the year.
I think, I think, it, it always happens, I'm, I'm just saying, every year we have to start pulling out of edit for contractual service reasons.
On this expense report.
Does it require an eleven percent increase, that's, that's reached down increase? We increased it to eight seventy five next year. That's a five, that's a five percent increase roughly.
We could live with that.
I thought you indicated we could take it back to twenty twenty five's number.
I did say that, that was before I, like I said, I've only been in the seat eight months, so I don't know what's happened year over year, Commissioner Henry's saying, we always exceed that, and then they dip into edit to pay contractual services.
It worked for us.
Were we reducing professional services? Were we reducing professional services?
Back to twenty twenty five? Yes, Commissioner Brand said yes. Well, they're calculating that, the Y O C contract. How is it, uh, coming along, or what have they requested for the next year?
They ask for additional monies that we put in our edit plan.
Okay.
That's a, that's a whole nother discussion. I'm in favor of privatizing the Y O C. And I, that's at least the third time I've said it on record. It's not a very popular statement, but the county certainly don't want to take it over.
So we're keeping seven twenty eight.
Where we at?
Did you come up with a difference there on?
Yeah, it's a deduction of fifty seven to ninety six for a total of eight, eight hundred and seventy five thousand.
Which number was that?
Uh, contractual services.
How much was the deduction?
Fifty seven thousand two ninety six.
Thank you. Uh, professional service institutional care. You got an increase of twenty eight thousand to seven twenty eight?
Go back to the seven hundred thousand.
Yes.
What's that paid for?
It's the jail stuff. That's the reason I ask.
Well, you mean what, what in the jail?
Medical.
The medical, right?
And that's the reason.
Transportation's in there.
Hmm?
It's transportation's in there.
This one is also included in the max levy, and their amount is much lower than they could ask for.
So, Commissioner, I don't, I don't understand. Yesterday we had the sheriff here who he explained how there was medical expenses that they were paying for, for the jail. How's this differ from what they're paying for?
I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know the sheriff's budget.
Nancy, can you help us? The professional services institutional care in the commissioner's budget pays for what at the jail? Is that the medical contract?
I don't, I.
Yeah, so it's like Evansville State Hospital.
It's the state hospitals if, if they have to, um, transport individuals back and forth, I believe so.
I thought that was in your budget as well.
No, so if there's a, if there's a, a, uh, individual who's been picked up out of state, which happens occasionally. Um, usually a transport company will go get that individual and bring them back. And then they send, um, us the bill, which is paid for out of that line.
If there's an inmate that's in any of the surrounding states, we will pick them up. But if it's past the surrounding state, a transport company gets all of it, and that, that's part of that.
Seven hundred thousand dollars?
Yes. Because you have to understand, if, if an inmate picked up in Georgia, it's wherever they're out of their trip. So the inmate may go from Georgia to Nevada to wherever, until he gets back to us.
We had a, we had an incident last year where a juvenile was picked up down in Georgia. And it's Delaware County's responsibility to get that individual back. Um, we were out of money in this line, and Emily ended up helping us out and found some money in her line. That was able to, able to pay to fly that individual back here.
So in twenty twenty four, the budget was three hundred, the approved budget was three hundred thousand. Last year it was seven hundred, and last year.
I believe this also pays, Nate, this pays for a safekeeping of inmates too, doesn't it? Well, we have to, occasionally at the jail, um, the inmate may be high risk. Staying in our facility for whatever reason, and they are housed in, um, other jails. Around the county, outside the county. So that, that also occasionally happens. That's a big bill. We also pay for, we have to pay for clothing when they go to those facilities. There's, there's a lot of things we have to pay for when they go to. When they're, when they're ordered to a mental health facility. That's where that, that's what.
I see three hundred and sixty nine thousand, so they spent about forty five percent. But in twenty four, that line item shows.
That was appropriated last year, and she increased her request at budget because it had to be appropriated. I do remember Sarah coming.
I would like to touch on this too. I, I touch on it every year that I've been up here in budget. Um, but the mental health, which we call three twelve professional services, Meridian services. I, I would like to, two things. On three twelve and three thirteen, I'd like those names changed from now on. Because at the state level, it is mental health adjustment, which is the three twelve. And then three thirteen is considered developmental disabilities adjustment. That is included, these two items are included with the estimated maximum levy calculations. And the amounts are set with a max by the state, and that's where the seven forty four. Sorry, yeah, seven forty four, nine oh five came into effect that we had to decrease their line to. And the other one, we are allowed, like this year, there's a max on that of one million, six hundred and ninety one thousand, four hundred and seventy. So there is room to increase that. However, it does affect your tax intake and stuff and, and disbursements. Um, so of course you would have to consider that. But I would like all of you to realize that. And commissioners as well, that that can be increased, increased even more so than it ever is. Up to one, six nine one four seventy this year. Not now.
It's too late now.
Too late now. But I keep bringing it up each year, and, um, it doesn't really get increased a whole lot. But it sounds like from what they're saying, you might wanna, I guess, consider it maybe.
More than doubles to seven point four.
So, but we should be budgeting the max in when we submit.
Well, it does affect your taxes, and, and I'm a D L G F rep, so please don't ask me how much and, and all that. But I'm sure we could talk to the D L G F and they could help us work through it if that was increased.
Something to note for next year.
We wrote it down, trust me.
Okay.
Tanya?
Yes.
What'd you say you wanted three thirteen as your name adjustment?
Um, three thirteen needs to read developmental disabilities adjustment. And, and the other one should just read mental health adjustment. Because yes, we use Meridian services, but that's just who we, that's like a vendor name. That's not really.
Use any, yeah, there could be a different entity at some other day.
Just like they're changing, uh, insurance companies, you know what I mean, from Apex to whatever. We shouldn't have the name of the place.
So leaving that at seven twenty eight for this year is for our benefit.
Well.
It's not affecting our, the rest of our levy.
Right, it's already calculated into the levy. So we've already.
We don't, if we cut it twenty eight thousand out of, we don't save anything really. Because it comes out of special levy amount.
Do we wanna leave that at seven forty four available number?
I think we need to ask the D L G F what we would be allowed to put in there.
The seven forty four, nine oh five is what you have to put in there because you guys budgeted more than that. And so that one has to be reduced to the seven forty four, nine oh five, because that's the max they're gonna allow you. On the other one, the amount advertised and used was seven hundred and twenty eight thousand. So, um, we can't turn around and increase that at this point in time.
Well, they're, they're decreasing it, down to seven hundred thousand.
Oh, okay.
And I'm asking about, uh, the one above it, uh, the three twelve, the mental health adjustment. They decreased that back to eighty five budget, or twenty five budget of seven twenty three, four ninety four.
Seven forty four, nine oh five.
Do we wanna leave that?
I don't think they did.
The, the one that's currently labeled as Meridian Health, that's a, that's a special number. It's set by statute. There's a whole formula for where it comes from, and the county is obligated to pay it to mental health providers. Full stop. You have to.
Shannon loves it, I heard.
There, there's no way around it. They, they are in turn obligated to provide mental health services to the population of the county at large, not necessarily. They don't contract with the county government, but they are required to have mental health services. But there's nothing you can do about it.
There, there's, you're right, there's not much you can do about it, and my question is. My, my question is, what if we don't pay it? Cause I'm willing not to pay it, just to see what happens.
So I, I can't speak for the commissioners, but I see twelve twenty nine, two seven. Says the county fiscal body shall appropriate and approve the money necessary to carry out this chapter. The money necessary to carry out the chapters contained in another code section that has a huge.
So, so the point, point being is, you ought to be able to pick your own mental health care provider, in my opinion, right? The county knows what's best for the county. States shouldn't be doing that, right? The, the state's dictating who we have to pick and how much we have to pay. I wanna know what happens if we don't pay it. That's, I'm, I'm serious.
My suspicion would be you'll get sued by Meridian Health.
And maybe, let's, let's see. But at some point, someone has to fight this.
We've heard this in the.
This is.
Association of Indiana County.
Thanks for bringing this up, so you got me. At, at some point, somebody needs to put their foot down and fight this, cause this, this is not right. One additional thing that I just learned is out of that, three thirteen line is also paid, paid for, uh, pays for the J R P program at the jail.
J R P jump program?
Jail release program?
Jail release program.
All the ankle monitoring.
Okay.
It's made out of that. How come, how come is that in?
We had one in attendance yesterday.
I'm fine with it, but how come is it in your budget, not the sheriff's? Do we know this?
I don't know.
Be in sheriff's budget?
The seven twenty eight?
Right. It's a commissioner's program.
Did we reduce the institutional care? Council, did, did we officially reduce the institutional care back to the seven hundred?
I had a reduction of seven thousand five twenty eight for some reason.
That's.
That was the first thing, and then we.
And then we went all over the place. Okay.
And I think we're back to the seven five four eight that you originally had, correct? By statute?
Seven four four nine oh five.
Yes.
Which is the seven four four nine oh five.
We are making not a lot of progress here.
So we didn't reduce institutional care.
Three thirteen stays at seven twenty eight.
It's back to what you originally said. You reduced it first thing this morning. Yeah, that's where I, we were at.
Yeah, they're asking about institutional care.
Oh.
So what are we doing with that?
Tanya's recommending on three thirteen that we leave it at the seven twenty eight, since that's the way it was advertised, and it.
Leave it at the seven twenty eight? Okay.
Okay, postage. It's all been distributed, so that's down.
We used the new number, correct? Forty five thousand?
Yes.
We believe that's correct, based on the information that we have. We'll just have to see what the actual user is.
You heard the discussion about postage yesterday?
A lot of it, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
If you had any discussion after about five forty P M, I didn't hear it.
We probably did.
We had a lot of discussion.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll bring that up later, but, alright. So transportation is, uh, up five hundred. Can I go back?
Three twenty three?
Yes.
Communication?
Yes.
Legal publications?
Yes.
Official bonds?
Yes.
Liability insurance.
That needs to stay at the two million, so that's the, uh, the U S I, that's our liability insurance. So for all the vehicles, all the buildings, the grounds, a lot of it comes from the jail. People, you know, filing tort claims, things like that. So the annual premium is one point three million dollars. One million, two hundred and ninety three thousand, some odd dollars. It's one point three million dollars. And I believe what was budgeted last year was, uh, nine hundred and, was that twenty four? Nine hundred and eighty two thousand, one forty seven?
Yeah.
It doesn't seem right. Yeah, it was lower than that in twenty.
Eight ninety two, two sixty one, eight sixty one.
There you go. So that was just, ten percent was added to that year over year. So we at least need to go to one point three million to cover the premiums, and then we added seven hundred thousand to cover the claims. Now, I'm working with, uh, a local company right now, trying to, to see what their offer is for liability insurance. Uh, versus our current, uh, agreement with U S I, and the underwriter is Travelers with our current liability insurance company. But I'm waiting on a response from another local company to compare liability.
You're also working on remediation plans when claims are submitted?
Yeah, that's, uh, so we have a, a, our first meeting set up with, uh, the sheriff's office. Uh, we're gonna bring in U S I and Travelers and go out there and go over the claims to do, like, corrective actions, lessons learned. And upload those into U S I system to manage those. We also had a meeting, the commissioners, and I think the auditor was there. About, um, maybe three, four weeks ago, where, and, uh, I think Mr. Whitehead was there as well. Where we went over what the claims actually are, so we can start managing those. So, cause right now we have the lowest possible risk score any organization can achieve. Because we don't manage our risk, we don't respond to it. We're neither proactive nor reactive, but we started those. So we'll have our second meeting here next week.
Hey, thank you.
By chance, do you have, uh, average over the last three full years of what we paid out in claims?
I don't, not off the top of my head, I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to figure out if there's room there to reduce that seven hundred thousand expected claims.
My gut says there is, but I can't, I can't tell you. I might have that in my email. I did get a bunch of information from Mark Gary and Brent Webster. Um, but I can't, I can't recall what it is off the top of my head.
Okay.
And, and again, I hope that we're managing our claims going forward, even if we stay with U S I. But it'll take about two or three years to overcome our, our, uh, reputation, I should say.
Workers' comp, that's, uh, just commissioner employees.
Is that just commissioner employees?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so utilities.
Electric.
Yeah, working on, um, a, a plan there, uh, with A E P. They've hired a engineering company. A E P's hired them, we haven't. Uh, so it's not like back in the day, I can't remember the name of the company, Amaresco. I think they got hired. Uh, we're still paying on that, by the way. Um, this is a free service, and they're gonna come in and do, uh, comprehensive analysis of the county building. And the justice center and the health department to start, because I think those are probably our three biggest users of utility costs. And they'll make recommendations, which will cost some money, but we put some money in our edit plan. To, uh, to work on some of the potential improvements that are gonna be recommended by A E P. But I can't predict those savings at this time. What I can tell you is that back in, uh, February or March, probably, uh, in this particular building. There is about, uh, don't hold me to this number, there's about a hundred and fifty K V A of capacitance in the basement. Basically large coils that store electricity, uh, because this building was designed to run twenty four hours a day. Designed to run three shifts, basically. And we all know that we don't run twenty four hours a day, we only run one shift. So our power factor correction is horrible. And we went downstairs and basically flipped a switch, shut off all the capacitance. And I got an update about a week ago from A E P, from Aaron Euler. That says that we're probably saving in this building right now about eight hundred dollars a month in electricity. Just by turning off the capacitance.
How much longer do we have on that, Amaresco?
Twenty thirty or twenty thirty one.
Wow.
Congratulations. That's in our edit plan, that's not in your budget.
Right.
So just for me.
Remember us having, Matt and I having a discussion about it at our A I C trading, so I sent you some information.
A minute?
I'm sorry, Dan. So your electric service for this year was three forty eight, three forty nine? You asking for three sixty two next year?
I mean, electric's up, so.
So, yeah, I, I think we can stay at the twenty twenty five levels pretty safe. I, I heard yesterday somebody. So, yeah, I, I think we can stay at the twenty twenty-five levels pretty safe. I, I heard yesterday somebody mentioned that maybe electric, uh, cost rates were gonna go up. I checked the I U R C website. There are no current rate, uh, increase applications from A E P. I also confirmed that with the A E P local customer service rep yesterday. So any increases that were previously approved by the I U R C are already in place for this year, and we don't anticipate any for next year.
Okay. Gas? Same thing, or?
Gas, that's that whole constellation thing?
So leave it?
Pardon?
Leave it, leave it at twenty, leave it at your request for this year, up four percent?
I think you could leave it at twenty twenty-five. I think we're gonna have some good results out of this. I had a conversation last night with, uh, the gentleman from Cost Stewardship, and when Mr. Carroll returns, I will update him on our conversation. I want to put Mr. Carroll's office in direct contact with the operations manager at, uh, at Cost Stewardship. Her name's Angie, super lady, to get into some more detail and review the actual uh, bills from Center Point Energy and compare them to what we're paying out, and see if we can figure out what's going on uh, at the, at EMS and throughout the, throughout the county.
So what rate we used last year?
Twenty-five, yes.
Yeah.
So then water?
Um, yeah, if we can get people to quit flushing the toilet. We can, uh, we'll, we'll go back to the twenty twenty-five levels here.
Sewage? Sewage is up, right?
Um, so it, it was up. Uh, we had a bill this year based on the construction that was going on at the justice center, because they were using extra water to do the construction. And your sewage bill's based on your water bill, because there's not a meter on your sewage. So it's assumed by the Muncie Sanitary District that every drop of water that comes through your meter into your establishment goes down the sewer. So I think we can go back to twenty twenty-five levels is the short answer there. We shouldn't, we shouldn't see that in a one-time anomaly in twenty twenty-six.
Cable, internet, I'm assuming that's A T and T and some of the other things.
Go back to twenty twenty-five levels.
Roll through those, cable, internet, phone?
Yep. There might be an opportunity with phone. Um, that's not been solidified yet. I personally would like to see every desk phone in the county go away. There are way more modern solutions that are twice as effective, and they help you manage your time and organize your time, and you don't miss following up on calls and things like that, but.
That is part of, uh.
We pay a lot of money. That's on my list.
On my list, too. Okay. Alright, then repairs and maintenance, three sixty? What?
That's services. If you can go back to.
Everything going back to twenty twenty-five and utilities.
Give you that twenty spot.
Yeah, that's what I'm starting with, three sixty. Okay, so three sixty, maintenance services. Not sure what that, five hundred dollars, I don't.
Yeah, I give you that twenty there.
Right.
Thank you.
Buy lunch?
Maybe.
Equipment and machinery?
Twenty twenty-five level.
They burned through some of these already, so.
Yes, we are. Okay.
Vehicle maintenance and repair? I mean, I don't know, trucks get.
So, yeah, well, we have a situation right now with the, uh, with the building superintendent's truck. That truck wasn't very well maintained. About as nice as I can say it. Needs a transmission, needs a steering gearbox, needs a pitman arm, needs differential serviced. Um, it's pretty expensive. It's actually costs more than the value of the truck. But that truck has our, one of our plows on it. We need two trucks. So we, we're exploring a trade-in on a newer vehicle, not a brand new. Uh, but, you know, the vehicles are getting older.
So do you want to leave it at the two thousand? I mean, you only raised eighty bucks.
Yeah, put it at the twenty twenty-five level.
Which is why I was asking, because I thought, the truck could be old.
Yeah, two thousand dollars doesn't do much.
Building maintenance, justice center?
Yeah, you can leave, uh, those next two at twenty twenty-five levels at a hundred fifty thousand a piece.
Okay, rental lease? Well, the rental lease and rental lease equipment.
Copiers.
That's rental lease equipment is the copiers, right?
Yes.
Rental lease is zero. That's been moved somewhere else, I would assume.
Totally used to be Weber out of.
Used to be Weber, okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Uh, other services and charges, three ninety? Back to twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, I don't know what all's in there. I'm sure it's a catch-all, as I like to say, a cat's breakfast of, you know, types of things, but you can leave it at twenty twenty-five levels.
Elizabeth, or anything turned in there on that one? You say there's nothing?
No breakdown.
No breakdown? So for three ninety, which one is it?
So real quick on, uh, on three ninety, that pays for the soil and water conservation district. And I don't believe those fees are going up for next year.
They do sometimes ask for more, but.
What's that?
They do sometimes come and ask for more, but.
Didn't they ask for an employee last year?
I can't remember.
Yeah, they did.
Yes.
An employee to save us money. That was sarcasm.
So we did take that one down. Other services and charges, back to twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
Yep.
Since the description, you went up four hundred.
Yeah, you go back to, go back to twenty twenty-five. Same thing for, uh, service or conferences and training. Can we go back to the employees real quick?
Back to the employees?
Yeah, just, just a, an F Y I comment from Don here. When I was asking to leave the raises in place because we self-funded them through attrition.
Good morning, council. Uh, Don Chambers, building superintendent. Uh, I implore you guys to leave the raises in place. From what I understood, they haven't had a raise in four years. My, my, my people, which is including the housekeeping and maintenance. Uh, but I will, I do appreciate the offer of the four percent raise, but I, I, I turn it down because I'd rather have my employees have the raise. I think they deserve it. And anything I can do to help, otherwise, I, I really hate to see them not get a raise, because I value these employees. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
I, I have some thoughts on, on their ask on their salaries. We did our budget last year that was under a thirty-two and a half hour work week. If they're working forty, I think their salary should be adjusted accordingly. I don't know if that's the same as what you're asking in a raise, but I know we differ on some of that discussion, but I think that would be a fair way to get them some more income, whatever that difference is. We claim a thirty-two and a half hour and a forty.
Are you talking about the executive and exempt employees?
No, like for Don, his employees.
Yeah, his employees are non-exempt, so they get overtime.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they don't get comp time.
But still, their base, their, their base was based on a thirty-two and a half hour work week. So I'm saying, I would like to explore what that number would look like at a forty hour.
Well, well, per the Fair Labor Standard Act, a non-exempt employee, they get paid for every hour they work up to forty. So if these people are working more than thirty-two and a half, they're already getting paid.
That's not what I'm saying. Our salary study was based on coming up with an average of, based on their, um, if they were a PAT B or PAT A, like everyone had a number. And so then that was multiplied by their hours of work, and that's how we got their base.
Salary.
Base salary. So it has nothing to do with like, I'm just saying they're actually working more, so their base should be adjusted accordingly.
I disagree.
I know you do.
Yeah, yeah, because they're, they're non-ex, they're, they're non-exempt per the F, F L S A standard, and a base salary does not apply to a non-exempt employee. They don't have a salary.
But in trying to level everyone who does the same type of work throughout the county, that's how, the only way we could do that, because someone working more time doing the same job as someone working less time should get twenty percent more than this person. So I, that's, when I say base, it's not having to do with anything exempt, non-exempt. At this time, it's literally, we were trying to work to get everyone equal, because there was so much, uh, variety and variables in play. So I, I know what you're saying.
You're advocating to leave them in, at a minimum, if not?
Advocating that we explore what that base would be now that they're working more hours, because I would say that would be the fair way to compensate them.
Right.
I don't know if that's the same as a four percent raise. I don't know if that's more. Like, I don't know what that number is. Matt has all the numbers. I think he could pull up quickly. I just want to explore that, because I want to make sure that we're fair, that your base on how we calculated everything in that salary study is fair to you.
So they're hourly employees. They get paid by the hour, and a four percent raise would increase their base hourly rate, and they get paid for every hour that they work.
I just like to explore both opportunities.
There isn't a second opportunity per the law. It's, it's illegal to approach it any other way.
Again, if I may, um, I'm also gonna be part of the military benefit part of it, too, where it's like, I don't know how much it is. But I'm willing to forgive, just give it to my employees. If I can get them a raise, I'm willing to do what it takes. I will not take the military pay. I want my employees to have, have a, a raise.
Yeah.
I don't know how much I care.
Are they working forty now?
I want them to get a raise as well.
Are they working forty hours?
They're working thirty-two and a half.
Okay, they're still at thirty-two. Okay, that was, that answers, that, that answers.
That answers everything.
And if they work thirty-three hours, they get paid for a half of an hour based on their hourly rate.
That clears it.
And, and that's a belabor the point.
Commissioner, Commissioner, um, I want to kind of address a elephant that's been in my mind for the last two days. I sat here. I mean, I, I support Don, I support your raises, I support Fred's raises, I, I support everybody's raises. The problem is this, we don't, we don't have the money, but here's the elephant in the room. I, I've had people text me, you know, you need to consider lit, you need to, you know, think about new sources of revenue. Well, we, we have, and, you know, I've been on the front lines of that with Commissioner Henry and the other previous commissioner and Commissioner Rigan for the last fif, you know, for many years, and, and new assessive value has come about in the county. Problem is, it's all captured in TIF districts right now. And, and I know two of you sit on that board and are well aware of those accounts and those, those, those line items. Um, there's big numbers in those TIF districts, and it's unallocated money right now. New money coming in this year. Um, I've had Baker Tilly email me that I think the unallocated amount over and above the bond issuance exceeds six million dollars this year. So we do have, we do have revenue. The problem is, it's not in this body's budget, but everybody's asking this body to in, in, increase wages. How do we work with you and the redevelopment commission to find a way to share some of that revenue in a way that this body can recognize that? So that these people can get the raises, you can get the raises for your employees, and everybody can walk away happy from this. It's not that we've been ignoring something. Um, there's revenue, it's just not in our accounts.
Yeah. So the number that you said six million dollars, that only considers debt service, right? It doesn't, uh, consider any other encumbrances or obligations that were agreed to by the redevelopment commission. For example, if, uh, if there was a, a stormwater study or something that was agreed to be paid, the things out of Daleville, the things out of Yorktown, that's not in that six million dollar number, so I do believe that.
It's not, but that six million dollar number also does not include the total balance of the TIFs today, which is twenty-one million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, forty-three dollars.
That's correct.
So there's a lot of money that's not, I mean, we can pay for, I mean, I watch, everybody watched the county redevelopment commission meeting. It's like a hodgepodge of folks coming in asking for different stuff, and, and I agree with a lot of those requests, and I'm, I'm happy that we have discretionary funds in your, you know, discretion, that we can support those people. That's what that's for. It's supposed to help. But, um, I'm saying, I think we're to the point now where the redevelopment commission, I mean, I, I knew it well. It was left in really good shape. There's, there's a golden egg sitting there right now that could assist. And it's just been weighing in my mind, how do we get help to help all of these people and all of these requests from that money to make that happen?
Yeah.
It's gonna have to be something, and I don't mean to jump in again on you here, but it's going to have to be something that the county redevelopment commission initiates in cooperation with legal counsel and Baker Tilly on, you know, do we, you know, transfer, uh, do, do we do away with TIF and, you know, to get more money into the general fund? I don't know what those calculations, I don't know the mechanism. That never happened under any of my tenure at that entity, but that would be the first starting point to make that happen.
Yep. So in addition to the things that are, uh, what I'll say encumbered against those balances that aren't, that we can't quantify right now, because I don't have a tracking document, since you were there forever. Maybe you do have a tracking document.
It's less than a million bucks.
Of what was, uh, committed? Cause we just killed a six hundred thousand dollar issue this spring. Uh, the, the, the intersection study at six hundred west and four hundred south?
Yes.
That was committed last year. That was six hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I know, I know the Park One second interest was, was killed as well.
Yep.
So, you know, there, there was money, there was a bond issuance issued for that. There's different pots of money there that are now unallocated, um, in the millions. So.
So.
We're rubbing nickels together up here. You see this?
And, and that's what you were elected to do.
Make our nickels multiply, and we can't do that. Um, yeah.
Yeah, and, and you were elected to rub ni, nickels together. I mean, this, this isn't anything new. Um, we also know that we're gonna lose about a million and a half from the community crossings matching grant funds due to the changes that came from the state. So we'll be funding that road maintenance out of TIF, which is one thing that it can be used for. But to answer your question directly, I don't know that it is legal to pay operational costs out of the TIFs.
Agree with that point, yes. Um, but I know I've heard you say in the past that, you know, you have some interest in, you know, seeing money be returned to the general fund or to the, to the county council from TIF.
If it's legal.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, I, I don't, I don't believe, I, I'm not interested in putting any more TIF districts in place based on what I know right now.
They're strong, they're healthy.
Maybe some large opportunity comes in.
The money's not even being spent yet, so, from what's being captured. But that has happened. We have seen new A V, new assessed value happen in this county, and it's collecting a lot of money.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I just, I feel bad for all, yeah, because I'm, our hands are tied, and I want to say yes to everybody. But, uh, we don't have revenue to do that.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. You, you can only, uh, you can only expense what you have to cover with revenue.
With the redevelopment commission, would you consider bringing it up at a future meeting to see if they would explore some sort of, uh, uh, in, in, working with Baker Tilly to see if some of those funds could be released back to new revenue in the, you know, not what's in the accounts, because that can't supplement the budget. But going forward, if some of those TIF districts could be released, revenue passed through to the general fund, so that we would have a bigger budget to do some things.
Well, I understand what you're asking for. I don't want to put words in your mouth, so I would invite you to come to the redevelopment commission and make that ask.
I, I understand that, yeah. I'm, I'm not a, uh, I'm not a voting member, so.
Right, but you could ask as a member of the county council, you could come to the redevelopment commission and say, hey, here's our challenge, right? We're, we're still looking for four million dollars.
And the problem is, too, if that A V is released into the general fund, we're only having a four percent cap that we can expand our budget anyways.
That's right.
So might be better to capture it and work collaboratively with this body to use those funds to pay for some things. Uh, for instance, the sheriff yesterday had one car, you know, or wasn't even enough for one car in the budget. But, you know, that's something right now that the county redevelopment commission could fill that void to buy that car, that extra car.
Which we are, right? I think we bought six vehicles this year.
But they still had, they, they had like the equivalent of ninety-five percent of value, I think was the term that Nancy or the sheriff used yesterday in the budget, but that was forty-five thousand dollars that could be going towards raises.
Commissioner Brad, if I may, I'm gonna interrupt since you're on the sheriff, and I'll ask Ben to read something that's in state law.
Yeah, so, um, just when it comes to tax increment financing districts and what the funds can be spent on, in twenty twenty-three, the legislature did do an amendment to that law or to that statute, which is thirty-six, seven, fourteen, twelve point two, subsection A twenty-eight, which says that they can spend money on, quote, uh, expend revenues from a tax increment financing district that are allocated for police and fire services on both capital expenditures and operating expenses. So, to summarize, they can't just give you TIF revenues to the county general budget for whatever, but they can
Pay for those.
Service, police and fire, and it's. And it's says explicitly on both a capital expenditure basis and operating expenditures.
Right.
And so that's a relatively new change in the law. Previously, the only way that you could use TIF funds is if you could show a direct correlation to public safety and. The improved development in an area. There's not really much case law on this at all because it's brand new, it's not brand new, but. Cases or courts act slowly. So from the court's perspective, it's brand new. It's not been widely interpreted. But the plain meaning of that language seems pretty clear, so.
Yeah, and, and I believe the redevelopment commission already does that and did that when Mr. Book.
Dash seven, dash fourteen, dash twelve point two. A twenty-eight. Thank you.
For instance, I know the county redevelopment commission has assisted the county highway department. Happy to do that, you know, never anyone balking. I know that you're asking, you know, brought up a truck, you know, the, uh. Truck for, you know, the, or the maintenance man for this building. Is going to need replaced, you know, is that something county redevelopment commission? Is that county redevelopment commission, can they help out with that?
It's possible. We also have money in our edda funds.
You know where I'm going with this.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, okay.
Twenty twenty-eight edit goes away.
Technically, but not literally. Yeah, it'll just go into a general lit.
Yes.
I mean, the commissioners will still put together an economic development plan and then come to the council and ask for the. Allocation, right? Instead of approval of funds, we'll be asking for an allocation. It's a little bit different. But economic development will remain the responsibility of the county commissioners, not the county council.
So Elizabeth, Alexis and Whitney know how to proceed. What is the thought, uh, from council regarding the raises? That the commissioners are requesting?
I've got a question in regards to the. Human resources. What we're calling on this budget receptionist, supposedly we're saving thirty-five thousand dollars. Don't we have, aren't we currently advertising for an HR leader?
We are. So there were three people.
One eleven.
Yes.
So there were three in that office. There was the HR director, uh, there was the HR, uh, I don't want to get her. Assistant, and then, uh, Jenna was in that organization. When Sarah left, she was the commissioner's assistant. We pulled Jenna out of HR and put her as the commissioner's assistant. So we went from three employees down to two employees in HR. One of those employees recently retired. And we have an interim person in place. They started yesterday and we're on the search for a permanent replacement. That'd be titled HR leader.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We're only going to, in theory, have employee one eleven, one twelve?
Yes.
And one was, uh, one thirty-nine's gone away and probably won't stay away.
I don't. Yes, yeah, that was Jenna's spot. Yeah, the desk is removed, the lobby's been rearranged. Yep.
I'll give you my opinion. I'm going to stay consistent since a, a start and, uh. I'm going to ask that we put it back to the twenty-five salaries. With the only exception that the HR leader. I know the commissioners and the job description committee said that that amount really needs to be appropriate for that position. And I think we should put it at that, uh, you said sixty-four, seven?
Yes, sir.
And I think that's what it should be posted at when we open it up.
So for the rest of this year, if we hire somebody soon, we'll fund it out of edit.
You have fifty-four, eight, you're asking for sixty-four, seven. I mean, that's out of miss.
Uh, I, so I misspoke. If the current is si- fifty-four, eight, then we would, I want to add ten thousand to it.
No, current, yes, you want ten thousand to that, so.
Other comments from council?
We can revisit salaries later if we need, if we have any funds left over, I mean, but, yes.
I, I think the, I mean, I, I don't, again, I, I think fairness is a little bit of a misnomer for this year, but, um. Because, you know, everybody deserves something that's, goes without saying. I do think in this instance that what, what I've seen personally, just in the times I've been here on a regular basis in the last six, eight months. Is an improvement from Don's supervision perspective in getting his people to actually. Do the work. And that's been big, I think. And, uh, recognition of a lot of challenges that have been ignored for a long time, so. I appreciate Don's work on all that and I appreciate his going to bat for, for those folks. I, I. Do think that last year they didn't receive anything. Um, so. I am in support of, of, of that idea that, that they get something. If we're going to put everything back now, fine, but I'll be making that argument later.
What's the difference? Don indicated that he would forego his. Uh, increase.
Yes, my, my report said, and I'm willing to give up my military incentive pay. And order for my employees to get their raise. Probably one.
Did you have the amount for his incentive pay?
I don't. I think it should be.
I'm not sure how to explain that out. That says how much, so.
Is it educational incentive pay, the thirty-three hundred?
Yes. That's not the whole, that's a, that's a different people though. We could pick out his amount.
But just so everybody has the math, his four percent is two thousand four ninety-six and his incentive pay is twelve hundred. That equals three thousand six ninety-six.
Tell me about the mailroom. Are you, is there plans for anything going on in there?
Not immediately. I think I may have mentioned yesterday, there's a company called Midwest Presort. We already do some work with them. And, uh, they've reached out to me and asked if they could make a proposal for taking over our mail services. I just haven't gotten to it. I mean, my, my bandwidth right now, available bandwidth is very narrow.
I had Matt look up the, uh, the salary study. And the reason they did not receive any increases last year is because they were already above. Even the external midpoint. So fifteen hundred dollars basically is the change from the external midpoint to the external high. Based on the salary study.
And this question for the auditor's office, if Don is willing to give up his military pay and split it amongst. His employees that are underneath him. How does that get done?
Uh, just.
So he can determine not to take mil- his incentive pay?
Yeah. We're going to take that now. And then we divide it by how many people get paid for being in that bunch. And, you know, given, I guess, his full noun or whatever, you have, they prefer to do it. Um, as far as, but, but you can see that he's, I mean, that's how it's been done. How many is it? I know there's four. Are you talking like maintenance and janitorial? So everyone, is that six people or seven?
So there's one janitorial staff that I have in some disability, so he can't make any more than what he's making now. So he won't be included in that register. So they're actually, you go over the microphone, sorry.
Just a number, how many?
Do we know what?
Again, there's one employee that's in the housekeeping that's on milit- or, uh. Disability, so he, he cannot make any more than his eleven dollars an hour. So he wants to stay at that eleven dollars an hour. So that'd be. One other four percent that we wouldn't have to pay out. Plus my four percent that I'm giving up. So, and plus my military incentive, so that would be.
So you're going to have five total employees, right? That would get the raise. Five total employees that get the raise.
So Mister, Mister Whitehead was asking about the incentive pay, so that's twelve hundred, so twelve hundred divided by five is two hundred and forty dollars.
Who's the question on his ability?
Which line? We don't need, we don't know until they name.
No, I can't. It's just one of the housekeepers.
It's just a part-time employee, the one that's on disability, he's a part-time employee.
You have five full-time. Currently, plus a part-time.
Multiple part-time, multiple in housekeeping.
Okay, we have five full-time employees, so. So it'd be one fourteen, one fifteen, one sixteen, one thirty-three and one thirty-four. So that's the building maintenance tech, custodian supervisor. Justice center maintenance tech, three, well, there's three justice center maintenance techs listed. So that's five.
We've had discussions before, where the department will come in and say, well. We've saved this much money out of our budget this year, please. Give our employees a raise, or we brought in X number of additional dollars this year in fees or whatever. And we've never negotiated on that basis, so I'm not sure what we're doing here.
Yeah, I'm actually in agreement of that. I think we're capable of doing it or not because this is just this year, because once, we, we don't ever, we don't ever reduce salaries. So we're, we're offsetting all of the increases from last year too, so. Either we can or we can't, I think is the. Is the point. Bill's trying to make. Again, for now.
Yeah.
Bill, the only reason I entertained it is because most of those were bringing department money and asking for that. And this is Don himself offering up his own. And that's why we're only entertaining.
And it's, it's, uh, I understand his sincerity and, and it's, it's admirable, but. Um, I'm, I'm just not sure that's a road that we want to, want to head down. I was going to mention at some time too. Um, because of these people, you know, some of these employees do get overtime. Uh, they are getting a bit of a raise this year in that the overtime won't be taxed.
Oh, that's true.
So I, I, that should be mentioned. At the federal level.
Are you clear? Are you still needing guidance, Whitney? That's, that's what I've heard of consensus from council. Let's go back to twenty twenty-five so we can figure out how to figure.
Adjust, rate arm adjustment.
Right, the two adjustments of removing the employee. That's not going to be.
The human resource leader, what amount was at ten? We are moving that to sixty-four, eight?
Yes.
Yes.
How's the rest of council believe on that one, Brad and Bill?
I, I believe our approved job description and the concepts, I, she's got to fund it. I concur.
And then. Uh, just want to double check with the educational incentive pay line. Are we still moving twelve hundred from that or no?
Does not sound like we'll be doing that, Elizabeth.
Okay, okay, major.
Elizabeth.
Is part-time staying up?
Twenty-six.
Wait, which one?
One oh one, one thirty-nine, one oh one, excuse me.
Yes, yeah, that's gone away.
And then one ninety-eight changes? Yes, twenty-six.
Yes.
So is the only one changing in the salary line? The one eleven, one oh one, is that the only one we have a change in? Is that what it squares down to?
Yeah, not in the part-time.
And the part-time's staying at twenty twenty-six rather than going back to twenty twenty-five because it's less. And then I had a question on, uh, two eleven through, uh, two forty. Or two eleven through two, three ten. Did we go back to twenty twenty-five on all those?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So Tony, how to answer your question for three eleven, they went to eight hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay, yeah, I got that. The three ten I wasn't sure about.
Do you all need a few minutes to calculate?
Yeah, we will.
All right. Make sure you have anything else you wish to make comment on?
No, sir.
I do appreciate all your hard work and willingness to cooperate with us on budgets this year and, and Don, I truly appreciate your comments.
Well, one thing I want to make a comment about too, I know we spent a lot of money this year on. All the buildings, but I think we're going to notice a difference this coming up year because we're not going to have to spend. All the money because there's a lot of stuff needed fixed and. Now the biggest majority of it's fixed, so we should have more money this year than what we. Used up this year.
Your hard work is duly noted, that is for sure. Let's take a five-minute restroom break. Okay. We'll take seven minutes, how's that?
Seven minutes?
How long does it take you to go? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll get started again. Whitney, you have numbers for us?
Give us one second so we can calculate.
We've got started back too quickly then, is what you're telling me.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell them.
I understand. While they're doing it, I was also told that you all have numbers for communications and.
Yes.
Any of those you wanna rattle off, just let us know so we can be prepared on the right page to write them down.
Okay, so county general communications, page three. Page three. Page three. Well, it's on page four technically. I don't know when you're ready.
Ready.
Okay, so you have vision insurance, negative forty dollars. For a total of one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight. Dental insurance, you have negative one seventy-nine. For a total of five thousand nine hundred and nine. Short-term disability, you have negative three hundred and nineteen. For a total of seven thousand three hundred and forty-eight. FICA, you have negative eight thousand six hundred and forty-four. For a total of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and seventeen. So perf, we did notice that there were some employees that I'm assuming he didn't have anyone in, but now does. But in our system, we did not have perf calculating out of those. So this did increase, but it is still fine. So the perf is going to be positive eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty. For a total of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-seven. Health insurance, negative nine thousand three hundred and forty. For a total of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-five. Life insurance, negative one hundred and twenty-one. For a total of three thousand two hundred and sixty. Long-term disability, negative one hundred and sixty-eight. For a total of three thousand three hundred and eleven. Workers' comp, negative one thousand six hundred and sixty-four. For a total of eighteen thousand six hundred and forty-seven.
Will you repeat that one, please?
Yes. Workers' comp, negative one thousand six hundred and sixty-four. For a total of eighteen thousand six hundred and forty-seven. For the total adjustments out of the cube communication, negative one hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and fifteen. Making it a total of two million eight hundred and one thousand nine hundred and two.
Eight hundred and one? Or eight eleven?
Eight hundred and one. What was that? Two eight oh one, nine oh three, nine oh two, I'm sorry. What was that? What was your perf?
Uh, perf, one ninety-nine, two thirty-seven.
What was your FICA?
One thirty-seven, six seventeen.
How much is your total again?
Two million eight hundred and eleven thousand nine oh two. I'm off ten grand somewhere.
Do you have part-time for, yes, one second, part-time for two thousand twenty-five was thirty thousand and for two thousand twenty-six?
The way my spreadsheet is, it's all the salary and wages combined. So what's your negative there? What's your total reduction?
A hundred and, uh, a hundred and twelve thousand.
There it is. Thank you.
Yep. And then what did you need, Dan?
Totals.
Totals. The negative adjustment is a hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and fifteen. And then the total fund, two million eight hundred and one thousand nine hundred and two. Nine oh two.
Do you have another fund ready for us, Whitney?
Give me one second. I'm getting the numbers for the commissioners. I do have commissioner and I have nine one one, the statewide. Which one do you want first?
Are we all turn to the commissioners pages?
Okay.
At forty-five?
Thirty-six. We're gonna update FICA in person. On a different budget. Ready when you are.
Okay, for the total adjustments of the salaries is negative thirteen thousand and twenty-six.
Thirteen thousand and twenty-six dollars?
For FICA, negative nine hundred and ninety-six. For a total of sixty-four thousand and seventy-six dollars. For perf, negative one thousand one hundred and eighty. For a total, total of fifty-nine, six sixty-one. Workers' comp, you have negative one hundred and eighty-four. For a total of ten thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine. Workers' comp, negative one hundred and eighty-four. For a total of ten thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine. Total amount of adjustments, negative one hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-one. Total fund, seven million one hundred and forty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-three.
Seventy-nine. Are you ready, Whitney?
Yeah. For the total amount of adjustments in the salaries, fourteen thousand. For the FICA, you got negative one thousand and seventy-one. For a total of thirty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-eight. And perf, you got negative one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight.
One more time, one thousand?
One thousand five hundred and sixty-eight. For a total of fifty-seven thousand three hundred. For workers' comp, negative one hundred and seventy-seven. For a total of six thousand four hundred and nineteen. Total amount of adjustments, negative sixteen thousand eight hundred and sixteen. Sixteen thousand eight hundred and sixteen. For a total of eight hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-one.
That get us caught up in all of the?
We have one more that is ready for the courts. But we, this is the only one we could get ready at the moment because the courts are kinda difficult. So we're gonna have to go over them with Emily. But we can do the title four D and the, uh, general fund. Page what? For the total amount of adjustments for the salaries, you got negative six thousand, nine hundred. For FICA, you have negative five hundred and twenty-eight. For a total of fourteen, one twenty-two. For perf, you have, sorry.
Sorry, what was the first thing you said before FICA?
Um, total of numbers, total adjustment in salary.
Oh, six thousand, nine hundred.
Yes.
Okay, alright. And then what was the FICA, uh, amount?
Uh, amount, fourteen.
Uh, decrease, decrease.
Oh, decrease, uh, negative five hundred and twenty-eight.
Okay. Alright, that's, I mean, thanks.
For the perf, you have negative seven hundred and seventy-two. For a total of twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy-six. Workers' comp, negative eighty-three. For a total of two thousand, two hundred and fifteen. Total number of adjustments, negative eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-three. For a total of three hundred and three thousand, four hundred and forty-two.
One more time on that.
Three hundred and three thousand, four hundred and forty-two.
Alrighty, everybody have that? You say you wanna move on to the courts now in general? Or is that one?
That was, that was the only one we could do because we have to get with Emily on the other one.
You say you can do that one?
Yes.
And are you ready? Oh, this one, gotcha.
Just the, yep.
No problem.
The ten.
Alrighty.
What was that?
What's, is that all we got?
Yeah, we already did the commissioners.
Do you need those numbers again?
No, I got them.
Okay. And then we did states nine, or statewide nine-one-one.
Yeah.
Alrighty, I do have an update from the clerk about those reductions. Did he get with you all? He said, of the thirty-five thousand from professional services, twenty thousand can come from precinct workers and fifteen thousand from legal.
Fifty, twenty from precinct, fifteen from legal?
Right.
So thirty-five, thirteen thousand.
Right, that's the number that we had talked with him about yesterday.
Where was that at?
That was from professional services. Remember when we asked him to?
And you had to itemize it?
Itemize it right, cause it's broken down.
In the elective, uh, our election board funds?
Oh.
Page twenty-six is something wrong. Yes.
Fifteen more?
Fifteen thousand from legal and twenty thousand from precinct workers. That adds up to the thirty-five thousand coming out of professional services.
But it was in the election board, okay.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, yesterday he was saying seventy-five, well, the.
Uh, we asked him to work his numbers and he got back with us, so. You're watching, thank you, Rick.
I just got it open again, can you repeat the numbers?
Absolutely. Coming out of professional services, twenty thousand from precinct workers and fifteen thousand from legal.
I had already told, I do need it seventy-five hundred from computer services.
Well, he, he'd like, I mean, based off what he's telling us, this is how he'd prefer to have it. When he put it into OpenGov, it's all under professional services. And if, if you can read that, it's all broken down. So we asked him to itemize what professional services it's coming out of. We'll go ahead and read off the new numbers for the election board, since that's only that and the other, what was that postage and bracelet reduction?
Yeah. Uh, for total amount of adjustments, you have negative sixty thousand. For a total of six hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight.
Everybody have that? Commissioner Brand, you have a comment?
Yeah, I heard the comment about precinct workers and I'm not the clerk and I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but I do know that they're wanting to move towards vote centers. So you'd go from forty-four voting locations down to twenty-nine or something like that. So perhaps that's the savings.
We did cover that with him yesterday. I'm su- I'm sure that's where that's coming from. Thank you. Alright.
My comment on that to him was that, um, and my comment was, that time, several people from other counties have indicated they were saving forty, fifty thousand dollars for whatever it was. Here, here are precinct workers, um, and, uh, the same people were commenting that people were, they noticed people were standing in line for an hour, hour and fifteen, hour and twenty minutes. And my comment yesterday was that, um, I am certainly all in favor of voting centers. Taxpayers are paying for services. Taxpayers, if we want them to go to voting centers and have to stand in line for an hour, hour and a half, really defeats the purpose of a voting center. And, uh, with the same number of machines and a very, in my opinion, a very much increase in volume, uh, I just, I wanna see, my comment yesterday was, initially, I wanna see the voting centers manned properly. I'm all for saving money. But that's not the ultimate goal. The ultimate goal is to get more people to vote. They probably will if they don't have to stand in line for an hour and a half to do that. So, I mean, it really defeats the purpose.
Can I, can I chime in just real quick? I agree with you wholeheartedly. However, this line item, um, from a precinct worker standpoint, may not be less people per se. It's that they've not spent that much year over year, even in the presidential year in twenty-four. So we were comparing that.
Thank you.
We were comparing that against that, that overall spend during that real busy one. And the election employee numbers also, you know, are staying the same, just like that. So I'm with you. But I, I think, I, I, I think we just tried to get him to get it in line with actually what he would have to spend.
Alrighty, thank you, gentlemen. We're moving on now to the commissioners highway and engineering. We'll start with Cume Bridge Engineer.
Actually, I have page fifty.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we're gonna be like the broken record that you guys have heard from everyone else. Um, we did go through, we were able to cut our budget. Um, lower than the twenty-twenty-five. With that, um, we have had some empty positions. Our employees have stepped up to the plate. We have not filled those. Um, that gives us a savings and we were hoping to be able to give our employees a pay increase with that. Still with that pay increase, um, we are still under the twenty-five budget that was submitted. You know, we've had the lower-end staff, we've still been able to give the community the service, um, to make Delaware County the best it can be. Um, I know that you guys wanna stay consistent across the board. But also, these funds are not in county general. Um, but whatever you can do to help our employees out, we greatly appreciate it.
Your statement as far as it's not higher than last year's budget, are you including or not including the benefits and payroll taxes when you say that?
I am including everything. Right?
I'm ju- just making sure that everybody understands that.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so, just for instance, um, the first budget that's up is the engineering budget. Um, in twenty-five, it was, I'm just gonna round numbers off, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand. We submitted a budget for eight hundred and twenty-one thousand. And we did that for all of our budgets. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure. I know you said it's outside of county general, but it's, it's one of our taxing funds.
So the Cume Bridge is part of the max levy. The MBH and the local roads and streets is not.
Right. Just wanted to make sure council was fully aware of that. Questions for the highway department?
I do have some corrections that need to be made. Would you like for me to go over those first?
Please.
I guess I have a question to start off with, and it may be for Commissioner Brand as well. The engineer, is there still the state reimbursement of up to forty thousand for that position?
Yeah, that's a grant in aid, uh, reimbursement. So what has to happen there once, uh, once he comes on, on the twenty-ninth, we'll get his credentials to the auditor's office. The auditor's office will certify it with the state auditor. And once it's certified by the state auditor, that forty thousand dollar grant in aid subsidy will come back.
Thank you, I just wanted to reconfirm that, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
It'll be forty thousand in twenty-twenty-five and another forty thousand in twenty-twenty-six?
It, it can be. That, the way I understand it, it can be.
Even though he's not working a full year of it?
That's the way I understand it. Now, the state auditor may have a different opinion than mine, but the way I read it.
I like your reading there.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Please carry, go ahead.
Okay, on page fifty-two. Um, line one forty, one oh one.
Yeah, we're on engineer still.
I don't have anything in engineer. So if you have questions on engineer, it's all under Cume, Cume, uh,
Cume.
Cume Bridge.
Okay. Yeah, I'm thinking I'm going to church.
What was, under the engineer, was the big decrease in health insurance?
Um, well, we eliminated an employee that was not replaced. Um, the project director was eliminated. Yes, we're hiring an engineer, but, um, we don't have the engineer's health in there.
If I may, just with respect to the forty thousand dollar reimbursement, uh, grant in aid subsidy. The way the statute reads, it would seem if there's a, an engineer employed in twenty-twenty-five, then they would be eligible for a grant. And at least, again, the auditor may say different, but the, the statute just says, if employed, then forty thousand contributed towards salary. Doesn't talk about proration or anything else, so. I agree. That, that's why I said the way I read it, we should be able to get it. He'll be employed effective September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five, state auditor.
Back to your question, Bill. Um, when the engineer does come in, that health insurance cost is going to go up. Because we're gonna, I'm sure they're gonna have health insurance.
Okay, we haven't budgeted.
But, yes. No, you have not budgeted for it. We got those numbers directly from the auditor's office.
And the three-eleven contractual services, three, is that now three-fourteen bridge inspections? Is that just a trade-off there?
Um, yes. Um, correction for the engineer, a family plan was budgeted for that line. Okay. Thank you.
So that's included in one seventy-three as a family plan for the engineer?
I know.
So three, three-fourteen is just the same as three-eleven was?
Correct.
Why, why was there such a big?
We're just, we move it, because they were paying, um, bridge inspections out of contractual services. So why not, if we have a bridge inspection line, why not pay it out of there?
Why was there such a, a big balance in the contractual services as of June thirty, eighty-one thousand dollars?
I would say it was stuff that was encumbered from last year on current bridge projects.
You, what's, you know what the balance is currently in three-eleven?
Sorry. Contractual services and a bridge engineer?
And the contractual services? I will tell you that.
If I'm reading this right, two, 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 three, eleven? Yes. What's the balance? It shows the budget of this year starting at two fifteen.
That could be because of encumbrances.
Well, either ways, about a hundred and twenty-six days spent. Okay. I'm sorry, so where's that moved to then?
So it's going down to bridge inspections. Currently, we're also paying out of contractual services, our project director that left until we got a engineer in. She, her services is being paid out of contractual services.
Does that mean you have questions on others?
If you'll see also on, at the bottom of page fifty, four hundred, three, sixty. Um, the minus, the seventy-five thousand, that's, you're gonna see that in the four hundred budget. So the bridge budget that's under Cume Bridge.
You have another question, Bill?
Don't want that one.
Okay, does that mean you have another?
Cume Bridge.
Okay, um. Did we cover the repairs and maintenance bridge, the three-sixty-eight number? Why it's higher than what was budgeted?
Three-sixty-eight? I have that the twenty-five budget was three hundred and thirty.
Right, and the June thirty balance shows four hundred and seventy-seven thousand plus.
Um, I'm gonna say that, um, I'm not a hundred percent on this, cause, uh, the project director was in there prior. I'm thinking there was some encumbrances, um, or some money was moved in there to pay out for some bridge expenses. Without getting a full detail, that's the best I can give you. Without getting a full detail, that's the best I can give you.
Carrie, is it possible that it could be re, uh, reimbursements that come back?
It, it could be with, um, the project director's reimbursements. If it was spent out this year, then it can be put back in there to be reallocated.
And I know she fills out a lot.
Yes.
Reimbursements.
Yes, there's a lot of end dot and federal reimbursements. I'm sorry?
About two hundred and forty thousand. About two hundred and forty thousand, I think, rolled over in twenty-five to start. So. Is that the right number, three-thirty?
I, I wanna say yes, but I, I don't, honestly, I don't know. And the reason being is.
There's four fifty-seven in there currently.
There is, but I know that there's ongoing projects.
Sure. I would say watch that, because again, if you get to twenty-six, it's all over another three hundred grand, we're just kicking that can down the road.
Right, I know that. Um, I think right now we are, um, in limbo, not having the engineer in here to give us their input on it.
It's right there, what do you mean?
And Commissioner Brand has helped tremendously, um, so we're doing the best we can right now.
You are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Further questions regarding the Cume Bridge engineer's budget? Before we move on, I'd like to hear consensus on the salary raises.
So we stay consistent.
Other thoughts?
Concur.
I abstain.
Okay, so I have, I have a question on consistency. Okay, so equality? Is that what you're saying, equality?
No, anything that has, is part of the max levy for our budget, we're staying consistent in how they're being handled, right? Because they all play into all the cuts we have to make as of right now for our budget for the, that's all tied into the max levy. We still have four point three million to cut.
Okay, so, but our cuts is not gonna count?
This, this budget does.
This budget does.
But there's, there's a catch to that also, Carrie excluded.
So even though it's part of the max levy, you guys still can't do anything with that funding, correct?
Correct. So really, it doesn't.
It, it doesn't get you back to the county general number that you.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't give to the county general fund.
Right, but it gets you.
It plays into our.
To the max levy, yes.
Right. Which is what we're trying to cut seven something million from.
And, and I get, I get that, right.
Here, I'll tell you my dilemma. If I give you raises, and that counts towards the max levy, I may have to cut a position out of general in order to fund those raises. And so that's the wall that I'm running up against when everybody that comes up here says, not only are we outside of county general, however, this one is sort of looped in with it because it runs up against the max levy number. That's my issue.
Right, and, and I understand where you're coming from. I, I think I said that. So I understand where you're coming from. I just, we came in and cut our budget and was hoping that we would be able to give back to our employees. Um, so, I understand.
We all went into this budget with a little more hope than what we were given. None of us are excited or thrilled.
Yeah, we were, I was originally told that, uh, there won't be a lot of changes this year. They lied.
They didn't purposely lie.
They're just. More money this year than we had last year. That was not more than probably two months ago. Even that.
I was saving this for the right moment.
Stay, yes.
The comment was we'll have more money in twenty-twenty-seven than we'll have in twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes, appreciate that. Governor Brown's number.
Is that a mobile or us?
Commissioner, do you have a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the difference I see is we went to work on January sixth, and we were proactive in reducing our costs in our departments, specifically in heads. So we re, we completely eliminated a half of a head out of this office and combined with the engineering department, made two heads into one. We delayed the hiring of six individuals, and we've permanently cut three. So my answer for the other departments is, get to work on efficiencies. You know, we did it, and we've been working on it for a while with this intention in mind. Nobody can deny that they didn't see this coming as far as reduction in revenues.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with that. I, I understand you're trying to be consistent. We, we've been more than consistent by cutting people already. Because again, everybody, everybody knew this was coming, right? I mean, we all did. We, we've tried to, we've tried to cut people. And so, so it, it's not consistent, because we've already cut people, is, is my point. So I, I get what job you have, I don't wanna be sitting in your seat, but you gotta understand our point too. Because we, we've already made cuts to jobs.
Appreciate it, thank you. I guess I have a question with, with the cuts we made. So if there is gonna be no raise, can we come back after, in January, ask for those positions back? Are you gonna give them to us?
You can ask for them, whether we have the money or not to fund those, uh, might be a little different. I've gotta just do my due diligence and ask the auditor about that. If we, if we get it to our number, when we get to our number, they'll have money in their fund to then appropriate beyond our budget for next year. I mean, I'm not gonna say yes, but it's something you can bring to council and ask.
And we may have made a big mistake by trying to be proactive.
I wouldn't consider it a mistake, I would say you're doing your due diligence as every department should have been doing as well.
I understand. Seems like we get the same. Okay, you have any other questions for us?
Not in Cume Bridge engineer, from what I'm hearing.
And I mean, I, and I'll just, I abstain because of the, what you just said, so I'm in agreement with you.
I mean, the consensus of council is to go back to the twenty-twenty-five numbers to, uh, calculate those out. You guys need a moment, or? All right. Or, uh, flip page.
On this particular, uh, situation. All right, we're, we're waiting for them.
Well, we can either go on to Cume Bridge and start discussing there, or do you have numbers?
Not yet.
I don't think they have guidance.
We've just given them guidance.
I still think there's.
Or gave a, a nod that that's what they wanted to do as far as figuring.
Also, if they wanna come back, they can.
Right. Absolutely.
Um, something to keep in mind with the Cume Bridge, just so everybody knows. Um, Cume Bridge, when, when it's figured on the levy portion, uh, the other tax funds, the other three tax funds are a rate, like a flat rate, and the Cume Bridge is done as a percentage. And I think it was twenty-twenty-one that our county, uh, voted to increase that rate to, well, we said point seven, but, uh, it comes out zero, excuse me, point zero six seven is how it comes out. But, so when the, when the levy is figured, um, that's gonna be figured on that six-seven, zero six seven period. Um, when all is said and done, and this may be getting a little bit deeper than I can even go into explaining, but when it's all said and done, if for any reason our property tax levy is higher than the given max levy, because there's two different things, uh, that is how much you're over. That amount, if you are over, when it's all said and done, after CNAVs, after the, the circuit breakers, et cetera, um, if we are over, the DLGF will take the amount that we are over off of general, like that's just where they take it from. They send us a form, they say, is that where you want it taken from? We do, or not we, council has the an auditor, might even be auditor versus council, not sure on that, I think legislature kind of changed this year. But anyways, um, nonetheless, there's the option to take it from other tax levy funds, yes. But if you're wanting to take it from Cume Bridge, then you have to, uh, get the commissioners' approval.
Mr. President, if I might comment?
Yes, sir.
Um, really in support of Cume Bridge and their raises, knowing that they have, I know we've already voted, or we're moving on, uh, for consideration, uh, I think they have cut what they indicate, three people, and, uh, were proactive in that, and I, I guess I would challenge any other department heads that if they wanted to come before us with, uh, a cut of three or four employees, we would possibly consider in their department's, uh, raises.
I think that's a fine suggestion, Jim. Do you have numbers for us?
Full adjustment for salaries is negative four thousand one hundred and twenty. Again, for four thousand one hundred and twenty. For FICA, you have negative three hundred and fifteen. For a total of sixteen thousand two hundred and sixty-four. For perf, you have negative four hundred and sixty-one. For a total of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and eleven. And for workers' comp, you have negative sixty-eight dollars. For a total of two hu, two thousand six hundred and ninety-eight. Total adjustments, negative four thousand nine hundred and sixty-four. For a total of eight hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and forty-two.
Let's page fifty-two. Cume Bridge.
Do you want me to go over my changes first?
Yes, please.
Okay. So on line one oh three, one oh one, that says supervisor. That is our superintendent. Um, so can we have that changed to superintendent? That is what is on the job description that was approved last year. And then line one forty, one oh one, is a certified welder slash operator. That was figured on for the twenty-six budget off of an operator's pay and wasn't figured off of a welder's pay or mechanic's pay that was approved last year. So that needs to be increased by one thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars to make that salary fifty-three, six, thirty-six. What was the increased amount, I'm sorry? Eighteen forty-four? And then the only other thing that I wanted to note, as I said earlier, that on the three sixty, um, that came from Cume Bridge Engineering, the seventy-five thousand, you'll see that on page fifty-three.
What, three-ten for baseball services, whatever.
So on three-ten, um, that's gonna be the cost of the CDL physicals. Prior to the beginning of twenty-twenty-five, we went to the health clinic, and that was all covered. Um, we had a hard time getting our employees in to get the physicals. Um, so if we can't get them in at the health clinic, we take them to Concentra. So with that, it's gonna pay for, um, the CDL physicals. Right now, the commissioners are taking up that tab. It's also gonna pay for our drug testing. Drug testing used to be done at the clinic as well, um, but the clinic was not given a CDL drug test. They were just given a regular drug test. Um, that doesn't qualify for their CDL, um, and through the federal motor vehicles. Um, also, it's the GPS for the vehicles that is on Cume Bridge side. Um, it also pays a portion of the RTA program that's through the garage, um, which tracks all of our equipment, any kind of service work parts, anything that's been put on that. Um, and the garage diagnostic, uh, computer.
Thank you.
Some of those are also, if you, um, along with that, some of them are gonna be under the three-eleven for the contractual. Um, that's gonna be our GPS. A, and really the CDL drug testing and physicals, because those contracts are through the commissioners.
I see, okay.
Five thirty-six? Yes, so if you look, um, the thirty thousand that was taken from Cume Bridge Engineering, we lumped that, added some to it to put, um, for any kind of equipment for the bridge crew. And the vehicles line, that is to pay for our leases that we are locked in for the next five years. That is the exact amount.
Carrie, can I, uh, something that I, I wanted to bring, uh, I wanted to get to this one, do this, but.
Okay.
Related to, and this goes back to, and I'm a broken record, so, you know.
I, I think I was earlier too, so, we're in the same boat.
I support everybody's raises. Okay, uh, you know, I mean, y'all are working hard, you're doing more with less people, I mean, you've cut, you've made all the efficiencies. Is, is there a way we can use the equipment and vehicles and go ask for assistance from county redevelopment commission and, you know, we try to move some more of those, you know, in the, in the construction industry, use the term sticks and bricks, can you use the, you know, the, the bolts and nuts of the, what you're doing and gather that some, that cost, pay for that cost someplace else, so we can help with the?
Um, absolutely, if, if the commissioners would approve for that.
On board with my, with my recommendations to utilize TIF money for some of these.
Yeah.
Items.
So.
I wanna encourage that, but I, I don't know how to. I want to encourage that, but I, I don't know how to.
So redevelopment did, um, help us out this year. Um, they're doing over a million-dollar project on Fusion Road. We just got that approved. Um, and they've, uh, all the gravel roads in Delaware County now, our certified gravel roads, are gonna be paved. And so they did pay for those. Did buy some equipment this year as well, so they are helping with the funding.
Yeah.
Um, I, I see what you're saying.
All that is related to economic development, doing those road improvements and making it better when people come here.
It, it is, um, and I would hope that we would.
Yeah, we've all, I don't mean to interrupt, but we've all heard the stories about people coming here and hitting potholes and, you know, never even stopping, just keep on going, uh, and so you guys have, you know, what you're doing is improving that a lot, but, yeah, how do we, how do we get that paid for?
Honestly, I.
So we can help you with the other stuff you.
I would like to see this left in the budget, and I would hope that redevelopment would be able to help us with larger projects, like bridge replacements, things like that.
Sure.
Um. But that doesn't mean that we can't go and ask and see what they'll give us.
The auditors did need to make a correction on this one, on line one seventy-six, and we did cover this with Carrie prior to today. Um, it's showing twenty-four thousand six fifty in the book. And OpenGov, um, has the correct amount now, which is twenty-two thousand three fifty instead. That's a decrease of two thousand one hundred.
Two thousand three hundred.
Two thousand one hundred. I don't know if I said it wrong. Danetta? Twenty-two, three fifty.
So that's a, that's the adjusted total.
It, it needs to be twenty-two, five hundred and fifty, is what it needs to be.
Oh. Well, this, this is three fifty.
I need to add five hundred to mine.
This was from up in.
So which is it?
My opened up spreadsheet already had twenty-two, three fifty.
That's what I'm looking at, twenty-two, three fifty is what I'm looking at.
Should be negative twenty-three.
There we go. Makes the numbers bad.
Which gives you a total of. There we go, okay. And Carrie, with this adjusted salary for the certified welder and operator, that fifty-three, six thirty-six you gave us, is that including a raise on that?
That is not, so if you look, yes, so if you look on page.
I just wanted to confirm.
Yep.
Which would be the fifty-three, six thirty-six.
If you look on page sixty-nine, at the top, where it lists, uh, certified welder and the mechanics, that's the same pay.
Also, that is the requested.
So, the twenty-five, yes, the twenty-five.
Is a fifty-six hundred.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
In order to give Whitney Alexis and Elizabeth an idea of what they're doing on these raises as well, um, in favor like we did in Kuhn Bridge Engineering, what is the pleasure of counsel?
I don't like it, but.
I don't like it either.
Yeah, I mean, we still have to cut four point three million. I don't know where we get it. Yet.
Other comments from counsel?
No, I'm, Jim and I are still in agreement, they've done their yeoman's effort, you know, they're being punished for it. And I, and we don't fight it, we don't know what to do, because as was just said by Ms. Piper, we're still four million short. What do we do?
Great arbitrary answer there, but.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, somebody, I heard somebody else do that as well, so. Bill, Brad, what's your consensus on the raises? In order to tell Elizabeth and company what to do.
I wanted to be consistent, I, I'm, I wish we had a better handle on where we were, I don't think we have a good handle on how much more we need to cut out of this.
I think we have a lot of calculations to do on that.
I, I agree, we, we've got, we have givebacks for this year. We have increased revenue on certain lines, and your miscellaneous revenue. And truthfully, I don't believe the maximum amount that we're working with, I think that's wrong.
I, I concur, no, I, I don't, I'm not convinced our numbers are all right, just yet, so I, I suppo- I support the raises for these folks, uh, but I, I think, I think we need to get to the end and see where we're at. We're really close to being to a point where we can have some, maybe whittle this down a little bit more and come back and revisit some of these things.
What do you say?
There are, uh, I mean, I mean, there's, there's multiple departments who've come to us and made really good cases, strong cases for, for employees, they've, they've cut their budgets, they've done what they need to do, and, you know, it's, it's premature right now, s- single out one and say, oh yeah, you're, you're different than the others, because they've all done a really good job of, you know, trying to be efficient where they can be efficient. So, yeah, I think we need to re- revisit them all collectively at the end, once we know where our numbers are.
Can we get your answer from, uh, everybody that's made comments?
I, I think that that was, let's come back to this one, that's, that's what I got.
Turn your mic on, Dan, please. Thanks, sir.
Right now, we're gonna have to leave it at the twenty-five and come back and revisit it. Kind of put them at the top of the list to revisit, because they have done, they have extra effort.
Okay. Uh, if we do that, I do have two questions. The garage foreman, theirs has to be fifty-fifty, right?
Yeah.
Theirs is superintendent too?
So the superintendent is fifty-fifty, the garage foreman is fifty-fifty, the purchasing agent is fifty-fifty, the office manager is fifty-fifty, and the payroll deputy is fifty-fifty. Um, which brings up another change. Um, the payroll deputy, which is one eleven, one oh one, that now is office assistant.
Payroll deputy is now office assistant?
Yes. And that job description was changed as well, um, when the new employee was hired this year.
See, those are split.
Yes, they're split, um, paid out of Kuhn Bridge and MBH.
Elizabeth, you need some time to calculate those. Uh, the salary corrections? Uh, the longevity? No, it's a fifty-six hundred. Fifty-six, fifty-three, six, three, six was the requested difference for twenty-six. No, since you said that, it's equal to what would be on page sixty-nine.
I have another question. Uh, the truck driver forty-two is a new position?
It is not a new position.
Not a new position.
Um, we had a labor that retired, that is one forty-one. So with that, um, our rule or policy is that you have to have a CDL to be hired. So a truck driver, that labor spot was moved to a truck driver's spot.
Yes.
We did that at the beginning of the year.
Okay, and that should then be at forty-six, five-ten? To match with the other truck drivers?
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, what, on for what, who? No, no, that. For twenty twenty-five.
Get a total for that one yet?
So for twenty-five, Brad told said additional.
Whitney, do you have numbers for us?
Uh, yeah, I'm so changing. Okay, we're ready. Counsel, we're ready.
Alrighty, ready.
Total adjustment for the salary is negative thirty-two thousand and thirty-nine. FICA, negative two thousand four hundred and fifty, for a total of fifty-seven, two twenty-nine.
Hold on a second. Yeah, rounding somewhere doesn't math up. You said the negative was two thousand four hundred and fifty?
Fifty-one, fifty-one, sorry.
Now it maths up. Would you repeat the numbers, please, for everyone?
Yes, negative two thousand four hundred and fifty-one, for a total of fifty-seven, two twenty-nine. Perf, negative three thousand five hundred and eighty-eight, for a total of eighty-three thousand two hundred and ninety.
Did you say the negative amount was three thousand five eighty-eight?
Yes. Workers' comp, negative nine hundred and sixty-eight, for a total of twenty-one fifty-three. Or twenty-one thousand and fifty-three, sorry. Total amount of adjustments, negative forty-one thousand three hundred and forty-six, for a total fund of two million one hundred and fifteen thousand. For a total fund of two million one hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and eighty-one.
Alright, does everybody get those numbers?
Yep. We said we expected Cume Bridge revenue to be down, right?
Uh, those figures come from Tanya. I didn't, I don't have Cume Bridge funds, the revenues.
Revenue says five forty-six, nine ninety-three. Last year, they were eight hundred forty, forty to the fourth, too.
Sorry, I'm trying to get on the same page for your Form Two, when did I get in there?
Oh, seven nine zero. Cume Bridge, total.
Page two, Cume Bridge.
These numbers are automatically, um,
Right, so we're, we're a three-hundred-thousand-dollar loss.
Right, like they generated a big loss. Elizabeth said all of this debt with the DLGF generated such as like the institution financial institution tax, C-VET, which is your commercial vehicle excise tax.
Oh, he's been on me all day. I'm so sorry, Kyle. Uh, so anyways, these are generated by the DLGF. Uh, we do not figure those manually and put those in. That's just an automated gener- gener- generated amount, uh, for like FIT, financial institution tax, and C-VET, which is commercial vehicle excise tax. And those are the numbers that they provided us. And Elizabeth said, overall, over all of the revenue this year in those areas, that all the numbers went down, um, a lot. Like that, apparently.
Councilman Dan, since we don't see those revenues, can you read those numbers again?
Okay. I just was doing a comparison, but the Form Two revenue, miscellaneous revenue projection included Cume Bridge, uh, in July one through December thirty-first, it was of this year, four hundred and ten thousand one oh one. The estimate overall for twenty-twenty-five was to be eight hundred thousand eight forty. For all of twenty-twenty-six, it shows five forty-six, nine nine three.
And what was it last year? Do you have that number?
Eight hundred, eight forty.
Eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars.
Year-to-date, and that fund has taken in a million nine twenty-one, nine eighty-seven.
Yeah. I was about to get to that, too.
Oh, and due to new legislature this year, the, actually, I was naming off FIT and C-VET. That money can now all go to general.
What all, what all went to general?
The FIT and the C-VET.
Then, I'm sorry.
Zero, okay. Okay, so, last year's FIT, financial institution tax distribution was nineteen thousand one oh eight. And the C-VET was fourteen thousand two fifty, so we're talking about thirty-five grand. That doesn't really make the difference.
Just pointing out the new legislature.
I appreciate you.
So if I'm understanding that correctly, Tanya, those two figures that Matt just gave for the FIT and the C-VET that would normally go to Bridge now can go to County General? Correct. So we're gonna help County General out.
In all the ta- the tax funds, not just Cume Bridge, but tax funds, period. Um, those two items can now go to general.
Can. And we have already allocated them?
Correct. They've already been estimated into the general.
Who makes that decision?
Uh, we discussed it with Eugene prior to just advertising.
Either way, back to the, oh, sorry. Right ahead. To Bill's point, if this cash position totals are correct, we've taken in revenue of one-point-nine million in Cume Bridge. Where did that revenue? How do these things, um?
When you're looking at this, this is a total estimation that you're doing in, you know, July the year before. So I think what he's pointing out is actual, because he's looking, are you looking at estimated or actual?
Statement of cash position.
He's looking at.
That revenue year-to-date, I'm looking at the same thing, yep.
Yes, the question is, if we estimated eight hundred thousand, how are we bringing in one-point-nine to be just that far off?
Again, the DLGF comes up with that number for us.
Right, but that's the one number we are calculating off of, correct?
I mean, yes, but they also get reimbursements that I don't think the, uh, DLGF is accounting for.
Mm-hmm.
So that's probably what all that money in there is, is reimbursements.
But my fundamental gap in my three years, and that's not to you, Benny, it's just a general statement. My gap in the three years I've been here is we never see actual revenues. We never see a breakdown of how much money went into Cume Bridge and where it came from. We never see how much County General revenue is in and where it's coming from. We have a ton of miscellaneous revenues, so we're basing our miscellaneous general revenue on this sixteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine number, which last year, or this year, was sixteen thousand four hundred. So we're only gonna see, we, we have a miscellaneous revenue increase of five hundred thousand. Allegedly. And again, like, Councilman Hughes said, which is stipulating, and I agree wholeheartedly, well, we don't know how much money we're bringing in. We know what the DLGF's telling us, we know that the max levy number appears to be skewed. We see these numbers as being lower than they should be. Where are we going? So.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna text downstairs and see if they can do a revenue audit trail for Cume Bridge. How about that?
Well, I'd like to see it for everything, to be honest, but that's, that's something we can tackle over the second.
It might not actually be additional revenue. I believe when we get reimbursed from NDOT, the Federal Highway Administration, that money probably flows back into MVH. So it's money that we've paid out of other line items for our matching funds, and then once the project's complete, we get reimbursed. But the, the accounting that you're asking for, the forensics, will, will surface that.
Yeah, the inflows and outflows. I mean, in a traditional business, we would see inflows and we'd see outflows, that's what we'd see, and it's difficult to do.
Like in engineering, we have money in infrastructure. We would pay out of that budget to fund the matching funds for an NDOT project, for example. And then when we get reimbursed, we believe it goes back into MVH.
No, no, no.
No?
It goes back into Cume Bridge.
Or, I'm sorry, back into Cume Bridge. I said, uh, the H-Cube Bridge. Thank you.
Is everybody clear as mud on that? Are we ready to move on to the next budget for highway? Which is local road and street, that was on page sixty-six.
Page sixty-one?
Any questions or comments regarding this one?
Why the big jump in operating supplies?
So that is going to be for paving, signs, our stone, and our salt for the winter. Um, our salt through that, um, fate bidding process did go up.
Under the circumstances, um, I know you want to, I mean, I know you want to increase the paving, is that something that we absolutely have to do?
Well, it, it's maybe not increasing the amount we want to pay, but it would reduce the amount because the asphalt's going up. Everything is raising in price. So it's not like we're wanting to do more paving, yeah, we would love to, but we're not, we're gonna do less if we don't have more money. That make sense?
How much less?
I can't predict exactly where it's gonna go up next year, but it's definitely gonna, it's on the rise. Right, here's another one where the DLGF is, I assume the DLGF has given us revenue numbers. Eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Mm-hmm.
The budget's over a million. Balance as of eight thirty-one, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, that didn't get us all the way to the end of.
We get monthly installments and.
Yeah, so, right, so last year was nine hundred and fifty.
Right.
Nine hundred and fifty-four.
That brought in, okay, which again, I'll show you.
Which, I mean, it makes, makes sense, and four forty-four, six hundred was the halfway point of this year. And we're only as good as the numbers we're allowed to use from DLGF.
Right.
Further questions regarding eleven sixty-nine fund?
So just, I guess, in general, you're comfortable with this?
I am comfortable with this.
Alright, now we're ready to move on to page sixty-six, motor vehicle highway.
So I'll start with my changes, if that's okay?
Please.
So on page sixty-six, one twelve, one oh one, supervisor, that's our superintendent. Also on page sixty-six, um, long-term disability or long-term insurance was not added in. So that is line ten thousand one seventy-five. And that's a hundred and fifty dollars. Where's the line again? One seventy-five?
Long-term disability.
Yes. The auditor's office didn't have it in the, didn't pull it.
So it's not in here at all?
It's not in here, it needs to be added.
And it says one seventy-five, I'm sorry.
What was that dollar figure again?
One hundred and fifty dollars. Then on page sixty-seven, one oh six, one oh one, it says supervisor. That is our assistant superintendent. Title again. Um, it goes from supervisor to assistant superintendent. One twenty-five, one oh one, which is the truck driver. That got deleted in air and open gov. So that salary, the twenty-five salary of forty-six, five-ten, needs to be added in. And our requested amount should have been forty-nine, three oh one.
Carrie, that's for one oh one, or I'm sorry.
That's for one twenty-five, one oh one, truck driver, twenty-five.
I'm on the same page with you. These title changes, are you guys making those in real time?
Yes.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, those were changed last year.
They were changed, but it's not, yeah, wasn't in the book.
Again, it was one of the ones that got changed back.
I, I thought yesterday there was this discussion that there was some glitches that some of them didn't get changed.
Did you say forty-nine, three, what'd you say, forty-nine? Forty-nine, three oh one.
This would be the twenty-six request.
And then on page sixty-eight, the twenty thousand three forty-two. That needs to be removed. Which one, I'm sorry. Twenty thousand three forty-two, workers' comp. A hundred thousand, that needs to be removed. And the reason for that is, um, it was put into two places. We had discussion back and forth. Um, the auditor's office was just pulling the employee portion, and I knew I needed a hundred thousand to pay bills out for workers' comp. So you're gonna see the increase in the thirty thousand series. I believe that's all the corrections I have.
Alrighty, thank you. Questions for the highway on the motor vehicle highway fund? Any questions at all?
My only question, I'm gonna need to know what the updated salary and wages number is when we add salary back in.
Page sixty-eight. Two oh two, three three dash two three zero, repairs and maintenance supplies. You have an increase of almost fifty percent.
Okay, let me look at that. So that is a increase for our road maintenance that would help with paving, chipping, sealing, anything like that.
Thought we could talk about that in another category.
Uh, we did talk about it in the local roads and streets. So some money is spent out of local roads and streets, some of it is spent out of, um, MVH. And then the majority of it is spent out of the wheel tax.
In your thirty thousand series, you completely removed vehicles, the amount there. Did it go elsewhere? Page seventy?
My thirty thousand five thirty-seven?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a hundred and fifty-two thousand?
Oh, uh, my fault, I went from zero to a hundred and fifty-two thousand.
Okay, so, um, in twenty twenty-five, we had it in the local roads and streets budget. Um, but we've moved it to the MVH because we can use our restricted money for that.
Okay.
So that freed up for us to be able to put more money towards paving out of the local roads and streets.
Perfect. Question was asked regarding the raises here. Some of them will have to make a for sure decision on because they are paid half from here and half from eleven, eleven, let's see, what is it?
Eleven thirty-five, yes. So I do have a question or a recommendation, um, because. Cume Bridge is part of the max levy. Is there a possibility that the raises for the employees in Cume Bridge, if those raises could come out of our MVH budget? And with that, during winter time, those bridge employees, they're out driving trucks, they're out cleaning the roads. They're, they're doing stuff that helps, um, out of the MVH budget.
Just to clarify, you were asking if the raises to cover the Cume Bridge come out of the MVH?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, eleven seventy-six is the MVH and eleven thirty-five, that's two, so, sixty to seventy, or sixty-six to seventy in MVH. Eleven thirty-five is fifty, ninety, fifty. Here, we're looking into that, we're after first bunch of numbers, find out if that can happen. I mean, uh, those employees that you're asking for, they're all in Cume Bridge, correct, that are, if you're one of the raises?
Correct.
So. Except the five that are split into multiple.
Correct.
Correct.
But they, they are doing highway work also.
Sure, absolutely.
It's definitely a combo, it's probably fifty-fifty of anything more.
Is there room in the MVH budget?
Yeah, I think we can make, we can definitely make room for it because there's not that many guys.
Without cutting anything else out.
So, our revenues, um, our projected revenues for twenty-twenty-six. And if I got these correctly from the girls in the Auditor's Office, is four million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. And I believe that is a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars less than what our projected budget was.
Could you read that number again, I'm sorry?
Um, our revenues are expected to be four million, nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Okay.
May I put, have input, I guess, from an auditor's standpoint on, on where it's coming from? This seems very confusing to me from an auditor's perspective, when it comes to us budgeting. The amounts all into this one. Yes, see, it's on, it is, here, let me bring it closer, how about this? So from an auditor's perspective, this just seems really confusing to me already. Um, as far as trying to put those into this one rather than keeping them where they're at. Uh, I know the reason why, uh, you know, I'm, that's your guys' stuff, but, um, I'm just saying. When it comes to us figuring all the benefits now and everything like that, that's gonna go off of, um, the salary that's in there. And are all of these people that's in eleven thirty-five, do they actually have a line in eleven seventy-six as well?
They do not, so I was going to say, could we do, um, I'm gonna call it a money move, a lump sum? That MVH, basically, I don't know if it can go through a claim basis, like when I move my money from restricted to non-restricted. Um, where there is a claim issued, a check's cut, and then the money is quieted us back in. Is that something that we can do, basically a money move? Um, a lump sum money move from eleven seventy-six to the eleven thirty-five? And leave the eleven thirty-five budget the way it is?
Here, this is for MVH, Motor Vehicle Highway.
Where's the money card from?
Are they just general tax funds or they have?
No, this, this is not a tax fund, her other one is a tax fund. They wanna know what your revenue source is for this eleven seventy-six, and to answer your question, I don't have a definite answer for you on that. I would really need to check into that for it too, all makes sense.
Okay.
Um, but, what's your revenue source?
Our main revenue source is from fuel tax, um, we get all of our funds from the state on that.
The wheel tax?
No, fuel tax, oh, fuel tax, sorry.
The highway budget is, is paid by gas tax, is what you're saying?
Pretty much, yes.
That answers my question, thank you.
I do have a comment, um, as far as operating balance goes. I know we've made some adjustments, so this doesn't include adjustments, but even with your revenue and what you requested already. Your operating balance for highway, restricted and unrestricted, is only a hundred and ninety-three thousand.
So you're saying that with my revenues and my budget, I'm gonna have an increase of a hundred and ninety-six thousand? Or I only have a hundred and ninety-six thousand to go off of?
You will end the year twenty-twenty-six with a hundred and ninety-three thousand.
On the roads, I get.
I think that kinda goes off of what our, um, requested amount. For twenty-six, and our revenue coming in at twenty-six.
Carrie, if, when we break for lunch, will you come up here and I'll make some notes on what I need to specifically ask?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You guys are looking for guidance, aren't you?
We're just making mental notes.
Mental notes, well, as large as this one is and as many employees as it entails. And with the questions that we need to have answered in the, it sounds like at the break.
Uh, we won't have to have discussions and guidance with this one because we already had enough trouble with the add-ons.
Because why?
We had enough trouble, like, calculating everything as is, so we're gonna need time on this one.
Because of the tens, twenties, and thirties, there's a lot of movement that will need made if we're cutting salaries. So it might take us longer than just like a few minutes, like we might have to come back for it.
We'll circle back to this one right now before we break for lunch, I would like to move on to the other budget. And the highway, the wheel tax one, page ninety-five.
Page eighty-eight.
On my agenda here.
I know, it is.
So appreciate it, Carrie, thank you.
So it's budgeted for a million dollars, we get a little over a million dollars, um, but we've just left that a million dollars ever since the fund was started. And this is strictly paving and chipping sealing, it has no employees, nothing, this is just paid for materials. No trucking, no fuel, nothing. Yes, just materials. So all the, the trucking, the fuel, all that has to come out of the MVH budget.
And the source of funds on this one?
It's from your BMV when you, uh, get your license plates, and the wheel tax that's on there.
How many do we have?
It's one million. Uh, yeah, and that number, like she said, that's, that's from way back with Donna, when it first started. They just said, oh, just count on a million dollars, so, every year we just put a million dollars and.
And it's a little over a million dollars that we get in, and so it just sits there.
Yeah. I, I do have the most current budget though, as of, uh, September second, and your balance is a million dollars, so.
So we just finished up the chipping sealing and paving the gravel roads that DCRC paid for. So we're going back to get in the paving, so we'll finish that up. And spend every penny.
And that's what we wanna hear.
I know.
Alrighty, thank you.
Uh, Kita will be bringing up the revenue for the, the revenue audit trail for the eleven thirty-five fund.
Okay.
Alright, that's good to hear, is that someone that's coming now or after break?
She's headed up here.
What's it cost to pave a mile of road?
I'm gonna say right around sixty-five thousand.
I guess. Pay, once you have sixty-five thousand, I guess you should.
And, and I might be a little low on that, Tori's probably listening and saying it was, should be higher. But I'm gonna say sixty-five to seventy thousand dollars, depending on how bad a shape the road is in, if it has a buildup on it. You know, if it had to be milled, we haven't had to mill any roads, um, but depending on the buildup on it and how bad a shape it's in, to bring it back up.
All vouch, all vouch for Carrie and Tommy, when I was working with RDC, the DCRC. Every year, they were with me like, very quickly, had a good list of roads. We determined which ones could be paid from TIF and which ones, uh, wouldn't serve or, and or benefit a fifth district. And, uh, yeah, I have utmost admiration for what they're doing with paving, so kudos to you, Carrie and Tommy too, he's out all the way, but yeah, you guys did great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wish, I, I, I'm like everybody, I wish there was more, I wish we had more money to do.
Right, yeah.
The work you were doing was always.
And it was a huge benefit because you could pay for the materials and we only had to pay for the labor and the trucking. So, yes, it saves a tremendous amount of money.
Yeah. Getting quotes and hiring.
How much was DCRD, you wanna put in?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Carrie, his question was, how much did, uh, DCRC put in annually, that, that amount varied depending on.
It did vary, um, thank you.
But, but I think some years it, it approached maybe six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I will tell you that the Fusion Road project is a little over a million dollars that DCRC is paying for. Um, in the gravel roads, I wanna say maybe it was one fifty, one seventy-five. So, just if you go off of those right there, it's over a million dollars.
It was, it was, it, it could be, I mean, it's matching the wheel tax amount.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll move back to the MVH fund. I'm like, uh, it's page sixty-six to seventy, so we've got a few of them there. Big thing we need to do is come with a consensus for Whitney, Alexis, and Elizabeth on what they're doing on the, uh, requested raises. We've already made a decision on a few of these for half their salaries and another fund to remove it. I am in favor of also going back to the twenty-twenty-five salaries for the time being. Was the council's pleasure. Turn your mic on, Jessica, when you.
Hi, I was just saying that, I don't like it, but I agree that we need to continue in the direction we've been heading, address other, address the later, if we have the funds.
You know, our opinion's same thing, we're not happy about it, but what you do.
Bill, Brad, any comments?
Yeah, that, that concur.
Well, I think that gives you all an idea of which way to go on that, to go back to the twenty-twenty-five numbers for now.
So you know that one will take us.
I understand, I understand. Further questions right now for the Highway Department?
For this number. So this, uh, Kita just handed us this audit report for Cume Bridge, eleven thirty-five. It's basically the breakdown of the one million, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, ninety-seven. It matches to the dollar to what's in that cash position report. And then it just shows the, you know, money coming in from INDOT. Tax distribution from SEVET, federal reimbursement from INDOT. So again, like, so I guess it just confirmed what we, we saw, what we've seen, this is just for twenty-twenty-five. Doesn't answer the question of why this one looks paltry compared to.
The only kinda answer I have is, um, that I think they're being very, very, very conservative with their numbers.
They are. We were just discussing it, Jessica and I, her numbers, trying to calculate that, that figure. Once we're done, I mean, we have to make a decision on max levy and things like this miscellaneous revenue. And determine if we really feel these are appropriate numbers to be basing the three million plus cuts we still got left to go.
We don't have a choice. I mean, we can't say, oh, we're gonna spend.
Well, sure, we did, we could.
Three or four million over.
Decide to overspend, if we wanted to.
By, we only have a limited amount, right? Um, you, Ben, or Bill, the three that have gone through this the most, have the most knowledge. I mean, if we say that we wanna spend fifty million dollars.
Well, it, it comes down to what your operating budget is at the end of the year twenty-twenty-six. Like, that's the end goal here at budget.
If you're not in the red, you're good.
If you're not in the red, at least you still have some.
That's it.
Uh, now whether you have to borrow or not to, you know, pay bills.
Way of saying it, but I'm just saying, to his point, like, we have a six, we are calculating a six and a half million dollar operating balance into the equestrian.
That's correct, yes, yes.
We, we, we by design, this council has previously established that with you guys, and it's.
Six or six and a half?
Six and a half currently.
Is that set up?
Yeah.
No, that is the decision of this council to decide.
Consensus of the council.
To pay the bills and not have to borrow.
To have, have, to maintain that, that level of operating.
And we only get paid twice a year, so the only reason we have to keep six and a half, in my opinion, the only reason we have to keep it that high, is because we only get paid twice a year. So by June, we're struggling to, you know, have money in the bank, same with December. If the state would decide to pay us quarterly or some other more meaningful way, we wouldn't have to keep six and a half million dollars in the bank all the time.
But that would require four settlements, man.
I know, she, she, more work for them, I, I get it, but I'm just saying, like, from a, a money standpoint, it's.
And just for some history, in twenty-nineteen, the council, the sitting council at that time. Okay, sitting council at that time, uh, that was the first time in like thirty years we were able to get our budget to a place where our operating balance was high enough that we didn't have to borrow. And since then, we've just worked our tails off to maintain that, um, it was the consensus of that council that, for the most part. That using taxpayer, taxpayer dollars to pay interest was a poor use of those funds, and so we worked really hard, and that's.
Build up the operating balance.
Yep. Yep, and so, and then obviously as expenses increase over time, we've had to increase, it was at one point a five million dollar operating balance, but now we're six and a half.
At what point with operating balance did the council get away from having to borrow?
That was the twenty twenty budget.
Okay.
That we did in twenty nineteen.
What, what, what was the operating balance?
At that time?
The, the year before, just a ballpark?
It was six at that time, what, uh, nineteen? What was our operating balance for the fiscal year nineteen? I'd have to go look in some old books.
You get down to five, I wonder if you have to borrow.
Probably.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and I, I express this like.
Wanted us to increase it.
Yeah, right, but I expressed, I mean, there are mechanisms with which we don't have to pay interest where we could get a line of credit or some of their mechanism to pay June bills, July bills, whatever.
I mean, no one's ever responded to that, but that was the quote, the statement I had last year of reducing that number. By simply having available funds in the bank to pay bills to bridge the next tax gap. Then I think there was discussion about, you know, well, let's say they don't pay us, well. Like the DOC or something, you know, I, I don't know, but I mean. If that was a tragedy of epic proportions, we're gonna be, you know, talking to the star or whatever, you know what I mean? Like, it, it wouldn't be our responsibility that they failed, if that's, so, I, I don't know, that, that's my take on it, I think that. And I've heard this from others, you know, that operating balance, I think is a, is a challenge because of where we are. Without raising taxes, without raising additional revenue, that operating balance is limiting our ability to not have to cut people and other things.
Yeah.
Just for what it's worth, you, you do have the ability to take out short-term debt, revolving debt based on anticipated revenues like a second installment of tax.
Yep.
It's not a policy statement, it's just you, you do have that ability, obviously there's some carrying costs that comes with that, but that could potentially allow you to carry a, a smaller. Uh, cash balance in order to, to fund certain things, using that as a backstop, so, but you, you can do that.
Yeah, every business does it. Anyway, that's, that's, that's.
Before Tom and Carrie sit down, any further questions for highway? All right, thank you both.
Thank you.
Yeah, as Matt alluded to, it is lunchtime, we're gonna need to take an extended lunch in order to let Elizabeth, Alexis, and Whitney crunch all their numbers.
I, I'm, I'm thinking that's gonna take a little bit longer.
Longer than that?
There is some movement that we had to do to get things set up in her tens, twenties, and thirties that took us a while on the front end.
Okay.
Does involve the benefits, so that may take a minute.
Yeah.
But, um, maybe at least till tomorrow, that might, it might take that long. We might have to revisit it tomorrow.
Alrighty.
We worked on this for like, I wanna say like a good two months trying to get. Everything from the tens, twenties, thirty thousands, and it was down to the wire. We were still working on it when the budgets were, the budget books were to be printed. So I, I can contest that it's gonna take a little bit.
This is, being completely outside of county general, I mean, max levy, we don't need it tomorrow or any of it.
Here's my question to council, do you have other departments that you'd like to talk to today and ask questions of? Or are you willing to get a list together, contact those departments and say, we'll start up again tomorrow morning for all of that information? In recess now? Oh, that's right, that's right, yeah, you guys wanna?
I'll come back after lunch and make that decision.
Yeah.
All right. It is twelve forty-eight, says reconvene at two o'clock?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're in recess.
I thought it was a victory song.